And the first island to address tonight is a public hearing. And Ms. Ferguson, as interim town manager, would you like to address this, please?
Yes, sir. So if you guys were here on Saturday, you probably hear some of the same comments. So we'll just work through those, but I need to start by making sure the public understands that the pier is uninsurable for wind and water driven events. So if something were to happen to a newly constructed pier in the future where that's concerned, we would still owe the debt. Additionally, what's presented in your documents tonight is the worst case scenario as far as tax increase as coincides with what the engineers have told us for not to exceed number. That number did, the language did have to go before the LGC in an application. And so you're considering the worst case scenario that takes into account the highest construction numbers for which could be used that they presented. So just it's the most expensive method of construction that could be used. Your commissioners could still work diligently to have workshops after these public hearings that were Saturday and tonight's public hearing in order to look at how town funds could be used to offset this amount so that that would not be the total amount that would need to be issued should it pass the referendum when it went before you for a vote. So that number could come in much lower, but again, the worst case scenario had to be presented in the documents. Bonds will only be issued for the amount that is needed and gaining voter approval doesn't mean that they'll ever be issued. It depends on what this board or any future board within that seven years chose to do. So those are just some opening comments before we open it up for the public.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ferguson. The order of doing things during this public hearing, if you would be kind enough to raise your hand, I will recognize you to come forward, speak into the microphone and address the commissioners with your comments. You will have three minutes to say what you would like to say about the subject matter. And we'll do that till everybody's had an opportunity to speak that wants to speak. And then we'll go into our regular monthly meeting. So with that, I would also remind you, it's not a question and an answer back and forth. It is a public hearing for you specifically to say what you want to say. And so the commissioners and the audience will be listening, but no back and forth or debate, no rebel rousing, no knives and guns, please, just nice exchange of ideas. So with that, who would love to be first? All right, yes, sir.
Jim Bauer, 329 Ocean Boulevard West. Let's speak of facts. Fact one, no one really misses the pier. It's been closed for years and not one person said, quote, "I'm not renting," or "I'm selling my house because the pier is closed." How do I know this? Because if there were one and only one text, email or letter indicating that it would, that would have happened, it would have been plastered over every one of the shrill social media sites and would have made the news. So no one really misses the pier. Fact two, we are sending our future selves or offspring in the Holden Beach community for more of the same in the not so distant future. Do you think another major storm isn't on the way? Of course there is. Do you think that this pier is going to be there any better than the last one? Of course not. Will there be more arguing, fighting and bruhahas about the pier? Of course there will be. Fact three, we are never, ever going to get any sort of return on the investment in this multimillion dollar sum, and no one knows what that sum is actually going to be to build, ensure, repair and maintain this pile of sticks once it is built. This much like the purchase of a boat is throwing money into a hole in the water. Fact four, we, the town homeowners and only those who are going to be paying for this, no one off the island, no one visits once a week every year, no one who visited Holden Beach over a decade ago and has warm memories should have a voice in this decision making process. I applaud the board that this is going to be a referendum for the town and only for the town. Fact five, the last that I've heard is that the cost to demolish the pier is approximately $400,000. The last time I checked, this is substantially less than the proposed $7,300,000 bond. If this bond issue was ratified and we go through with it, this is the amount for just the bond that we'll have to pay for plus a myriad of other costs. If the pier is just demolished, we can take care of that cost in-house and not be saddled with this incredible sum and this incredible debt. So when this referendum is written and submitted to the taxpaying residents and property owners of Holden Beach, it only makes sense that to offer a box that they can check that supports the demolition of this pier with no town finance construction in the future. This is not only the obvious statistically sound choice. We have no idea what the future will bring, what weather systems will ravage our coastline, what technological advances may be developed that will make structures more rugged and inexpensive, and that there is actually out there somewhere, an entrepreneur developer that may want to shoulder the cost of a pier and will see some sort of return on investment. Our current concept surely does not. Lastly, the next time you were on the beach and get close to the pier, look at the pier for a moment, then turn around and look at the beach with your pier at your back. Then ask yourself a question, isn't the beach without a pier beautiful as well? Thank you very much.
I love listening to Jim, he's no race thing. Anytime, bud. I'd like to talk about the payment plan that they have for the bond issue. If you're in a subdivision or condominiums or you stay in some sort of area where they have a community pool and tennis courts and all these things, golf course, country club, you pay a fee every year and it's set, they don't go for ad valorem tax. Ad valorem tax is something that's really liked by government, socialist and Democrats. The reason is, is because this, this money goes up and down with a value that's perceived on your house. Ad valorem tax is one of the only taxes on unearned gains. Since I've lived here, I've watched my house go from four times what I paid for it, two times what I paid for it, three times what I paid for it. But if you add a little bit to the ad valorem tax, every time somebody puts in a new pool, they're paying pier tax. Way it ought to be is like our sewer system. Our sewer system in 2005 was divided up as we owed some money. And we decided it would be $500 for 20 years. That $500 is split between 300, excuse me, a little over 3,000 residences. Brings in $1.5 billion for the last 30, 20 years. It's brought in $30 million. I find now that it's not going to quit this year like it's supposed to. It's going to go on and on. I never got the memo on that. But if any pier is done, maybe this, this project probably won't go through, but the next pier system, it needs to be split equally among the 3,000 properties. So each one, just like our sewer, says $500 on there, that whatever the amount is, will keep going. It will keep going, keep going, and that will be the price 20 years from now. It'll still say 500, just like our sewer buildings. Now, anything else for ad valorem tax, you know, the government collects it and the government tells you how much it's worth, whether you sell it or not. So, you know, market value is what a price will set, what a property will sell for. But when you charge people on an estimated value of a house they paid 100,000 for, if it's a million now, that's how you run old people out of houses. That's how you run people off of family farms and ad valorem tax. And it's criminal and it should be revoked and it should be split up the cost of government among the 3,000 houses of properties on this beach. Everybody paid the same share because I don't think I get more government than the next person. I don't think Brunswick Avenue gets more government than the oceanfront. You know, that's all it is. But it needs, whatever we do, it needs to be a flat fee. We'll figure out how much it costs, we'll make a flat fee, we'll divide it by the 3,000 properties, everybody pays the same because nobody's going to get any more advantage off of any attraction on this beach than the other man, no matter what they, where they live. Let's stop eating the rich. Thank you.
Steve J. Ten, 359 Ocean Boulevard West. I'm not a good speaker, but I wanted to address, the first thing that Jim said was that, that without the pier over the last few years, he hasn't heard anybody saying that they were just going to sell their cottage and move away. Well, if you look at my property, there's a for sale sign, throw it right now, because I'm not happy with the way things have been done around here. Now, I want to thank the board of commissioners, I put the time in, did all the work, it doesn't pay that much, but I want the pier to be replaced. I've always had it and I always will have it. And when I say I've always had, I've been here forever. I mean, I was here when the Holden's were down here at Surfside Pavilion, taking care of us when we were little. I can remember Mr. Bass, here is one of my Sunday school teacher. And I've always loved this place and I'd like to have it restored to the way it was before. Thank you.
I got a couple of notes. I've been coming with that.
Name and address.
Herman Demick, 1294 OBW. I can honestly say that Alan Holden knows me because he introduced me to my wife in 1975. And I worked at Surfside Pavilion that he spoke about, and I too want the pier to continue. And I'm doing it for, I'm going to have to pay the same amount as anybody else is going to pay, and I'm not a resident, I can't vote. However, $50 extra for my grandkids to have somewhere to go means a lot to me. They have, we, and I've got my sister-in-law back in the back, and we've got multiple properties on the island and we're willing to do our part because we don't have the Surfside Pavilion anymore. We used to have the pier and somewhere for the kids to go there. And I can tell you that there are people that are saying, where's the pier? If you had a pier, I'd like to go. We've had them say no to us because they don't know what the pier. So I will also say that those that have rentals pay this town a lot of money in income for those rentals. People that come in and rent on them. So, and then I pay for the tax on top of that as well. So you have got just as much to lose on the rental side that you could lose. And rentals are going down if you look at that part of the business. So I would, I would put out there pretty strongly that I would encourage us to continue with the pier. I would like to see it rebuilt as well. And by voting to allow the referendum, if you don't do anything else, you buy time. You buy time because you don't have to do it right away. You've got time to get that in your pocket and then decide what you want to do or not do. If you vote it down, pier is gone forever and you don't have that choice. So I would advocate that you maintain at least your choice. And I appreciate your time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor of Port Town, members of the commission. My name is Robert Brown. I live at 109 Crab Street. So I'm here this evening in support of the pier and the referendum. When my wife and I moved here, we were attracted by the amenities of Holden Beach. Once we got over the bridge and had that aha moment and the place started feeling like home, we learned what this place was really about. We learned that our neighbors on our street took care of each other. And with this impending storm that we have, we may all be faced to take care of each other. The upkeep of these amenities that we like so much here Holden, I think are crucial to the future of Holden Beach. It's important that we maintain relevant and competitive with our neighboring islands as, as a desirable place for families to vacation and to have fun and enjoy our small piece of the salty earth. The economic impact of loss of annual revenue for rentals for local businesses and of the town can quickly change our current landscape. Much like our homes here on Holden Beach, these amenities require maintenance. Does anybody have a problem with us that perhaps? We all have to fix these things, right? So we have to take care of the amenities. We have to take care of the things that are here that we like so well and that attract other people here. It's important that we act now to ensure that what we have to offer is available and in good working condition for our future generations. That being said, of course, it comes at a cost. Although I support the pier project, the board referendum before us is only one way to address that cost. There were funds, both public and private, that were available beginning of this process, and some of these funds are still available. This money could be used to defray part of the $7.3 million proposed in the referendum, reducing the cost of increased taxes. Unfortunately, this project, along with others, has become very political. If we go to vote against this referendum, it may be seen as a no vote for the pier. To ensure the future of our amenities of Holden Beach, I support the pier project and will vote for the referendum if this is the only viable option. At the end of the day, I will gladly pay the small increase in taxes to move this project forward if no other creative or incremental solution can be found. The pier, along with other community infrastructure, is an investment in the future here at Holden Beach for our generations to come. Local restaurant, I'm sorry, pardon me. The failure to commit to the upkeep of our amenities and infrastructure costs all taxpayers with every day of delay. And as a personal note, I'd like to say, it's time, all right? Thank you for consideration of my comments.
Thank you, sir.
Tracy Harris writes, 167 Scotch Barnard Drive. I am speaking in favor of saving the Holden Beach pier because it isn't just wood and tiling. It's our town's front porch and cornerstone, what makes Holden Beach a family beach. Across North Carolina, we have lost 42% of ocean fishing piers since the 1980s. That's down from 36 to just 21. When a pier goes, it rarely comes back. Our own pier, once over, over 1,400 square, over 1,400 feet long, is now only 750 feet long and has been closed since 2022. And if we don't act, we risk losing it altogether. The Holden Beach pier is more than nostalgia. Pier trips are often the primary reason people come to the coast. Pier anglers spending pumps over $150 million a year to work on its economy. And here's the point, 37% of pier users are from out of state and 2/3 aren't from our coastal communities, which means the pier brings fresh tourism dollars straight into our community. It's also about access. Federal studies show that walking on sand is one of the hardest surfaces for people with mobility challenges. A pier provides a safe, stable path to the ocean for seniors, children, and for anyone who struggles on the beach. That's priceless for a town known as one of the most family friendly and quietest beaches in America. Now, I want to address, address the tax impact because I know that's on everyone's mind. The proposed bond is for 7.3 million with about $4.3 million in interest totaling 11.6 million. To fund it, property taxes would increase by 0.0316 per $100 assessed value. That's about $31.60 per $100,000 for a home. And importantly, the town has seven years or up to 10 even to issue the bonds. If the money isn't needed, it is expensed. At the same time, the 20-year sewer tax is phasing out. Currently, that's about $433 a year and is decreasing each year until it's gone, which happens in about four years. This means much of the new bond cost can be offset, softening the impact for the homeowners. And remember, the bond doesn't have to cover all of the repairs or rebuilding. We can also use donations, fundraising, and even private-public partnerships, allowing visitors, businesses, and others who love Holden Beach to share the cost, not just the property owners. When you look at it that way, the bond isn't a burden, it's an investment. For the cost of a single dinner out, we can preserve the pier that defines Holden Beach's identity, economy, and accessibility. I will be voting yes for this, save the Holden Beach pier, and I hope others do as well so we don't let our pier fade into history and we do what we can to protect it for generations to come.
Thank you. If you would please silence or telephone. Anyone else want to speak?
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Keith Smith, 105 Durham. I think we need to tear the pier down. Just kidding. So let's just say you want to buy some property on Holden Beach. Nice piece of property, oceanfront property, and some friends and neighbors come by and say, hey, you know what? We want you to have that piece of property. Over the next five years, I think we can raise some money to help you. We might even could have raised a million dollars. The town in New Jersey did the same thing. If the local pier needed to raise some money, they raised over a million dollars and gave it to the town to rebuild the pier. So you got these friends, they come by and said, hey, let's help you out. I mean, you're shocked, you're amazed at their generosity. Then after your friends and neighbors have graciously offered to give you the money, a restaurant owner comes by and says, hey, if you want to buy that older house, I tell you what, we'll tear down that old house, we'll build you a brand new kitchen, the modern kitchen will be rebuilt, we'll put a deck out there, we'll put a new dining room, and it can be yours 100%. Just let it use, let us use it with you. We'll stick a brand new kitchen in there, we'll cook the food, we'll even refrigerate your beverages, and you come by and get one, any hot deck. Now, there'll be a fee for it, we're not going to do it for free. That's not my time. That's my time in the back, I'm not stopping. Then after you sit there in amazement at those two offers, you learn that the town in which you're going to build and buy in, they've got a track record of grant writing, $15 million in 2021, Holden Beach in 2019 with MRI would receive over $58 million. In 2022, they got $50,000 just to build a walkway across the dune. In '24, they got $420,000 to do, well, it's going to be a bathroom eventually. In 2025, they just got $70,000 just to research what to do out in Lockwood Farnley. Like, they're really good at their job. And they came to you and said, hey, we'll go look for grants to rebuild your deck that sits out over the water. Standing in amazement, you learn that people, they'll pay to park in your front yard. They'll give you like a quarter of a million dollars every year just to park in your front yard. As if it couldn't be enough, you, you learn that people that visit Holden Beach, they pay this thing called an occupancy tax. And they come here for different amenities and stuff, and they drive across the bridge, and then if they want to get, go fishing on a pier, they got to go back across the bridge and drive about an hour to get to one. By now, nothing's surprising you. But then you find out, if you get the grant money and you build this deck out into the water to go fishing, people will pay you to come out and go fish on the pier. There's even talk that if you just let them walk out there, they'll give you some money to walk on it. And so after learning about all these resources and these gifts and the grants and the parking money, the fishing money, the walking money, the grant money, and the new house money, after all these opportunities, you go, you know what? I think I'm just going to go to my family and see if I can just borrow a minute. That's about how much sense this makes. That's about how much sense this makes.
It took a lot for me to show up here today. Just to remind you that if you're out in the sun, use your sunscreen because in your later years, you pay for it. Have no surgery. This is what I had to have done. So I do apologize for my appearance, but I didn't want to make some comments. So I'll start then. Mayor Holden, Commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to comment regarding the proposed bond referendum for the pier. I recommend going forward with requesting the item be included on the neighborhood ballot we're voting by the Holden Beach voters. Not because I want the voters to vote against it, though I'm sure some hope that that will be the outcome, but because I want them to vote in favor of it. Let me explain my rationale, and you've heard of what it is. I'm not an advocate for tax increase, though I personally would have no problem paying the amount that's been proposed. I'm a full-time resident here and I pay taxes. I believe a tax increase should be a last resort, particularly for a project of this nature. It would not be an advocate if it was just about a tax increase automatically. It's important to understand by voting in favor of the bond referendum, it provides the Commissioners with an available option in that it would give them seven years to exercise the option if they chose to do so. But only after all the other options are thoroughly considered, such as public-private partnerships, fundraising strategies, grant writing, revenue in the town, but ultimately, even if it's passed, the Board of Commissioners never have to exercise the bond option, which would be truly great if that was not necessary. It's time to get creative and think outside of the bonds. I think it's important for the town staff to be directed to disseminate all facts about the bond referendum so that all properties do understand totally what they might be voting for or what they're voting against. Our small town and our surrounding community have changed drastically over the years, some for the better and some not so good. But the fact remains that we're a community, and we as individuals must come together and stop the device in this where it's going to be the detriment of our community. I don't use the basketball court. I don't use the pickleball court. I don't use the flash pad to play, run, and play. But I rarely go to Halsted Park, Selfish Park, or utilize most of the beach walkways. But I, and I have no problem supporting all those because they're for the good of the community as a whole. I support wonderful county parks, but I don't ever utilize any of them. I make donations to a lot of causes, but I'm never a direct beneficiary of those. If the pier were open, how many times would I use it? How many times would you use it? In my opinion, we should be about looking at what's best for the whole of the community and not just which issue or which project suits one's personal interests. The pier is but one issue, but admittedly a tough one. But we do truly need to have the opportunity, do need the opportunity to create a wonderful recreational facility at the pier property, which is a beautiful piece of scarce land. As a reminder, to eliminate a lot of misinformation out there in the public, the pier property was purchased because we needed an emergency beach access for the safety, for safety reasons, and a beach walkway for many property owners in that area and visitors to that location. We needed parking, and along with that came a pier and a building that we've now torn down. We don't need to continue to turn buildings down with no plans about what's going back in place. We need a place with activities for children, youth, and adults, such as games, food, fishing, and lots of other things. As I suggested almost two years ago, an economic impact analysis needs to be completed. I think you would be surprised what the outcome of that would be because it would indicate the benefit of this project of this nature. Let's come together and support what's best for our community. So when we use the statement, it's the best family beach, we're just that, and everyone that crosses that bridge truly feels they're equally welcome and won't come back.
Anyone else want to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Tracy Gillan, 163 OBE. And everybody's talking about this being the cost of a dinner. It is $31.6, and you said it's the maximum, right? But it could be. It's $31.62 per $100,000 of value. So if your house is valued at $1 million, that's $316 a year, every year, until the debt's paid off. I just wanted to clarify.
All right. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Marty Arrowood, 114 Shrimp Street. First, I support the rebuilding of the pier and if needed, using bonds to achieve that goal. My original comments were going to address the cost. I was using Tom Myers' figures from his Facebook post and breaking down the cost to monthly and weekly, trying to get it down to where I can relate. I'm a history teacher, not a math one. And as she just reiterated, a million-dollar home is $360 a year. In 12 months, that is the cost of a meal. In 52 weeks, that's about the cost of a breakfast combo meal, if you look at it on a small scale. But as I started reading the submitted comments for today's meeting, I looked up the agenda, and I heard from some of the meeting, the comments from the meeting, my thoughts shifted. The misinformation about the purchase of the pier property seems to grow with the years. As was just stated, the land was not bought for the pier. That was the last thing that was considered. Check the minutes that go back over all those discussions. It was purchased to have an emergency access mid-island, public access, especially for those who live across from the pier, public parking, and finally to save us some land on the oceanfront for those of us that live here permanently. Because it was very obvious that Mr. Bass was going to sell the entire campground and pier property, and it would be developed. And as you can see, there are five mansions or four mansions, whatever it is, sitting on the campground right now. Then what really broke my heart were the comments that in summary said, quote, "Since I don't use the pier, I don't support it." Or how about those that said, "In all my years, I've never been to that pier, so we really don't need it." And those are in the comments that were emailed in. You know that same logic, you know? It's that logic you're using that says, since I don't use the police department, I don't need police. What a world we're living in when it's all about me and it's not a good, what's good for the whole. Consider these homeowners rely on rentals. If Holden Beach is one of the only beaches in this area that doesn't have a pier, that's one less amenity. And here's the thing, those renters pay occupancy taxes. If we don't have occupancy taxes, our property taxes are going to go up. Those B-part funds pay a major part of our budget. If you don't believe it, look at this year's budget. It seems the more use, another thing that got me was people were saying, well, people that live on the island aren't going to go to the pier. It's people off the island. Good. I want them over here. Our community is growing. We need to be a benefit for our community. They're going to come. They're going to at least pay the pier costs. But finally, in closing, you may not use the pier, and I'm going to speak personally here. My boys used to love to go out on that pier in August to watch the Persseid meteors. You could get all the way out on the pier and you could see the meteor showers. They used to love to walk down that pier and talk to those old fishermen and what are y'all catching and so forth. And if you don't think people rent houses to go fishing, my next-door neighbor had renters all summer long for over 29 years that rented the upstairs of his house so that they could go fishing with Mr. Oscar all week long. So I hope, in closing, that we will do this so that my grandchildren can walk on that pier. Thank you.
With all this knowledge in this room, I know there's some more to be shared. No, you've already shared your little bit. Will, anyone want to speak? Please say your piece.
Yes. Good evening. Robert Barisi. Me and my lovely wife Rose married, lived at 1339 OBW the last 10 years. The last I looked, we lived in a democracy with representative government. Somehow, it doesn't work on Holden Beach. Correct me if I'm wrong, you all appear, keep saying, no matter what the referendum is, from these people, you're going to get your pier. You did it four years ago on the initial purchase. We all had an HBPOA survey. Better than 60% wanted nothing to do with it. What did we do? You bought the pier with our money. We got a condemned pier that y'all never inspected. Wait a minute, you inspected it from the water level up. And why couldn't you inspect it underneath the water level? The sea was rough that day. Here's an idea, reschedule the inspection. Did you buy your homes without inspecting them? That's your money. So you did a good decision. With our money, what'd you do? Condemned pier, worth nothing. You also said you were going to use the parking revenue to offset interest payments. That's not happening, is it? It's going to extra expenses, salaries, whatever that is. I don't know. On top of that, you can't insure the pier. You did tell us that, although I had to beat that issue to death at this podium with some insurance book. Okay? And you finally admitted it. Now, thank God, you're admitting one thing truthfully, that you can insure this pier. Here's an idea, you're in a hurricane belt. Y'all want to buy a $10 million house without insurance? Does anybody in this room not have homeowner's insurance? If you do, get out. You're an idiot. So what's up with this? We voted you in, although I don't know what we were thinking. I voted for that one. She's out. Thank you. Okay? He didn't get in because he speaks his mind, and he spoke the truth about the pier. You guys, stupid as hell, didn't vote him in. You voted them in. Two of these people, two of these people voted, I believe, for the original pier purchase. They should be in jail. Okay? If I voted for that pier, I'd be ashamed to show my place in Holden Beach. I'd go back to Boston, despite the fact that they have 49 genders, pregnant men, okay, and they're surgically mutilating children. I came here for one reason, the reason we all did. I didn't come here to have a bunch of people serve self-interest and not live.
Everybody can say what you want. Yes.
Chad Hawk, 1222 Ocean Boulevard West. Kind of going down Robert's path a bit, but I'm not as eloquent. Thanks, Robert. Two years ago, this board had a major change. And that was in 2023 because frankly, previous board wasn't listening to its homeowner vote for life. Period. They weren't. So here we are. The current majority of these commissioners that we're sitting in front of us could have easily shut this down. Could have just moved on from this. They didn't. They continued to listen. We're here today because of that. But I got to tell you, while that might be a good thing, there are things that this town has that are bigger fish to fry. So much bigger. We need a new firehouse. We need it. We don't want one. We need it. That's it. We need more water for the firehouse. It's been explained to us many times. We need it. We don't just want one. Our beach, our beach re-nourishment, FEMA's not going to bail us out anymore. Army Corps of Engineers has told us to go pound sand, literally pound sand. Imagine that. We have to be able to stand up for ourselves. Stormwater grant. Another thing, we don't need it. Oh, yes, we do. But we don't want. What's going on there? Our vacuum system, Tim and the team, Chris and the team, doing a great job. Continual costs, very, very expensive costs, things we need, not something we want. So let me say this. I love the idea that we've gotten grants, but aren't, grants aren't coming back. You got to read the news. Grants are going down. We've got one of the best teams that can do it. I appreciate it that they're going away. While a pier is great and brings a lot of nostalgia to this heart, and kids and family have been going there for a year, I appreciate that. But it's a want, an expensive, uninsurable want. And as a part of our agreement with the LGC, let's not forget, every improvement we do over the time period of that agreement with the LGC, we have to fix it, no matter what, whatever the cost is. Remember that. This isn't just 7.3 or 11.3 or any of that. We have to maintain a building. We have to employ people to do the building. We have to special rebuilding costs when the storm comes. We don't have any of that in front of us. And we have all these other needs, not wants. Period. So I ask that this board reject this referendum to a formal homeowner's survey, not just voters, and really find out what the homeowners want. Thanks for your time.
Hello, Maria Surprise, 159 Ocean Boulevard East. I'm going to take this opportunity to speak as president of the Holden Beach Property Owners Association, and just want to let everybody know that we will be sending out a survey to all Holden Beach property owners to get your back, to get your opinion on this, and the plan is to share it with them at the September meeting. So please look out in your emails. I will, I will be sending out a note when that goes out. Based on the public hearing we had Saturday and based on the comments we've had tonight, if I, and I'll have the details for the September meeting, but right now, it's over 90% of current Holden Beach property owners are not in favor of spending additional money for the pier right now. They are in favor of potentially looking at other ways to finance it, but they don't want their tax dollars to go up as a result of it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, still got time for whoever wants to speak. All right, last call.
Regina Martin, 1032 Ocean Boulevard West. I've sat over here and I've listened, and I came Saturday and I listened. And I hear you all telling me that people don't want a pier, they don't want this, they don't want a tax increase, and none of us want a tax. But we're talking about a bond referendum here that we may or may not ever get. If we vote for it, it's another option. Someone, and I don't, I think it was last Saturday, mentioned, having a toolbox. When your carpenter comes to your house, does he bring a toolbox with him? Does he bring a hammer and a screwdriver and whatever else it might be that he's there to fix with him? So if we're thinking of having a pier, whether you think you're going to use it or not, whether I'm going to use it or not, my family will use it, and my renters that come to my rental properties will use it because I hear it all the time, and I don't care why whoever said that in the audience said it. I can tell you, I hear it every Saturday in the phone, where is the pier and when are you going to pick? Neither here nor there. The toolbox. Let's talk about the toolbox. So we can have a referendum, and we can vote to approve it, and we may or may not ever use it. This board will change over time. We've got seven years, and seven, we might change three times. The feeling in this audience might change. A lot of people that have spoken have been here 10 years. I've been here since 1962. I've seen a whole lot of change in this board over the time period of that. I've seen a new town hall. I've seen water and sewer, which we didn't have. I've seen a whole lot of things change here. But if you have a toolbox, and in that toolbox, even someone mentioned a flat fee, well, maybe that was an option. Nobody's looked at that. We have a bond. Maybe that is an option. Grant, public-private partnership, which we have tried to bring forth several times, fundraising. The first part of that park out there was done by fundraising. And guess who initiated that? And y'all will be surprised from that. It was the HBPOA that now stands between us and the pier for a time, but that's my opinion. So we need to use our toolbox. We need to use every available thing that we can come up with that doesn't cost you, that don't want to pay for it. That gives all the rest of us what That gives all the rest of us what we want, which is a pier for our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren, and I'm third generation, I've got two more behind me, and more than likely, we'll have two or three more behind that. So we're gonna be here for a long time.
All right, again, last call. Anyone? All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the hearing.
I'll second it.
Uh-huh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foe, say no. Public hearing is closed, and now Ms. Ferguson, I think we're, Madam Clerk, we're in order to move to the regular meeting, is that correct? Everybody understand and agree with that? With that, those of you that are here for our, well, we're gonna, we're gonna pause just a moment and let the room settle down. About a recess. Well, we never called. Madam Clerk, you ready?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, we're gonna start the regular meeting at this time, please. And we're gonna begin, first of all, by telling everyone that corner of the room has a table, it has minutes and some more documents that might help you follow along as we, there's nothing back there, it's all gone. Okay, that's good. Everybody's got it in their hands, that's good. All right, so the first item is mimicking or a moment of silence, if you would just bow your head and thank the good Lord who lived at Holden Beach. All righty, thank you so much. Let's officially call the meeting to order, and thank you all for being here. And now, if you would, please stand with me and let's say pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic envisioned, under God, indivisible, infinite. Okay, we're gonna consider the approval of the agenda as presented, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve, the agenda's written.
Second. Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foe, say no. Agenda is now approved, and we're on number five, conflict of interest. Madam Clerk, would you read that, please?
Rules of procedure require members to disclose any potential conflicts of interest. Please state if you have any potential conflicts. Mayor Holden?
No.
Mayor President Myers?
No conflict.
Commissioner Smith?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Dyer?
No.
And Commissioner Park?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on number six, consideration of approving the minutes for July 15, special meeting and the regular meeting, is there a motion?
Motion to approve as written.
I'll say.
Motion made and seconded and discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foe, say no. They passed unanimously. Number seven, public comments, this is the time, those of you that have signed up, I have a list here, did anyone think they signed up? That haven't, I've got Mr. Bauer and Mr. Carter. And Mr. Bauer, you are first.
I've already said my piece, thank you, sir.
All righty, Mr. Carter, you will come and announce yourself and tell us where you're from for the public record. And you have three minutes, sir.
Bill Carter, 108 Starfish Drive, Oklahoma, Carolina. On September 28th, 2021, the Holden Beach Commissioners received a letter from the Property Owners Association. And man, it was written like litigation from a tall building lawyer, duty cheater and how. And they went through and they wrote scathing things about the commissioners and longtime residents on the beach. And they didn't, wanted to hold up the pier, what's going on? I suggest you read it, it's on the pier referendum on the Property Owners Association, September 28th, 2021. At any way, they accuse people of things, and they've got statistics and all kinds of things in there. And three of the signers of that letter are now commissioners. And they were against the pier, boy, that, that thing held it up and cost us $100,000 in extra financing just to buy the pier. These people were so against it. But three of them are our commissioners now. And we have other plans, the taxpayers have a plan for a concrete pier and everything, but they think that we need a wooden pier. The people that didn't want us to buy the pier in the first place, they think we need a wooden pier, so three of them figured that out. The three of them picked the contractor, and they wanted to build a 1930-style wooden pier that has about as much chance of getting approved as it does for the three little pigs to get a mortgage on a straw house. However, the concrete pier that the Holden Beach taxpayers would like to have, and it's at newholdenbeachpier.com, if anybody wants to look it up, newholdenbeachpier.com. The concrete pier is $20 million. It lasts from 50 to 100 years. It's much better, but our plan actually has a building, a pier, and everything, and it's done by the people that we had, for the architects at first, a plant in Thays, contractor here in North Carolina that's building the Allen Holden Center over at Brunswick Community College now. Now, we have another plan for this, and we should be able to have another option. But the three that wrote the letter on September 28th, 2021, gave us no options. We have no public input on this plan. We have no public input on these bonds. And you'll notice that they didn't include a building on this, because they figured that when this thing passes, they're gonna go, oh, sure, supposed to try and get you a pier. It just didn't work out. But what I want is for people in this town to understand that we need to get this pier built, and we can do it privately. We have all kinds of schemes between the people that live here where we can raise the money. But we can't do it without the consent of commissioners, and the three commissioners that wrote the letter won't do that. They wouldn't get us a bid on a concrete pier. They wouldn't listen to how we could, how we could pay for it. They're gonna give us this pier, this bond referendum, and that's it, and it's gonna fail, and then they're gonna say, sorry, we don't get the pier. And then we'll have to tear it down. And the same thing happened with the terminal groin, and go to Coastal Review, put in Terminal Groin, Holden Beach, and Tom Mike.
All right, thank you. We're next on number eight. Ms. Ferguson, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. So we accomplished A, which was the required public hearing at the beginning of the meeting. There are documents in here that if the board wants to move forward with next steps, that you would need to approve. I'm sure you guys will want to have some discussion. I will guide you to page 15 of your packet. And after discussion, if you are choosing to move forward with next steps, there is a suggested motion that the bond attorney has put in there for you that will need to include the language that also adds Resolution 2507 to that. And then I would turn it back over to you, Mayor Holden.
All right, is there anybody who wants to make a motion of any kind?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the bond order and a motion to adopt Resolution 2507.
Is that all in the same motion?
Yeah. They don't need to be separate, right? Kristi?
I don't think they need to be separate. Would you be willing to add the part that says, direct the town clerk to publish the notice of adoption, please?
Yes.
The motion maker and the seconding person agreed to the change in the motion.
Motion to adopt the bond order without, is that what you're saying? Without change or amendment and direct the town clerk to publish notice of adoption of the bond order entitled Bond Order Authorized in the Issuance of $7.3 million General Obligation Improvement Funds of the Town of Holden Beach, North Carolina. And a motion to approve Resolution 2507, setting a special bond referendum and directing the publication of notice of a special bond referendum and notification of the Board of Elections.
The chair's trying to clarify, are you making one motion?
Correct. For both things.
Okay. Madam Clerk, is that all right?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Ferguson, is that all right?
Yes, sir. Mr. Leo, are we good on your end?
Hey, good evening, yes, that, that works.
Okay, motion made. Seconding person agrees to, this way it's done. Any discussion?
So, wow.
Mr. Parfus, say his hand at first.
Okay. I hope everybody will bear with me, I've got a few things here I wanna discuss, it'll take a little time. I have written it down, but we'll see how I do, so please bear with me. First of all, in the bond referendum, we are asking for permission to issue bonds. We will not actually be issuing bonds yet. And the worst case is a $7.3 million in bonds. That doesn't mean they'll be issued. Now, I believe the voters need to decide if the board should have this financial tool available, should the pier ultimately go forward. The board shouldn't make that decision, the voters should. In order for this to happen, the Board of Elections needs town information by September 5th. If you've been watching along, you know, we've been on a pretty aggressive schedule to meet the referendum deadline. And I, I realize that it, it's not great that if you own property here, but you don't live here, you don't get to vote here. That's the law. I wish everyone could participate in the referendum. I suggest and strongly encourage you to talk with your friends and neighbors that do live here and vote here, and see if you can have a meeting of the minds on this thing. This isn't an ideal situation, but it's significantly better than what happened when the pier was purchased and when the party grant was done. If the referendum is approved, it still has to be approved by the LGC in February. So it's not a done deal, you're not $7.3 million in debt for bond debts. Due to this aggressive schedule, we haven't had time to complete enough engineering to get an actual opinion of probable cost. What we got was a hurry up, not to exceed, worst case, throw everything at it, number of 7.3 million. It's my hope that the board will continue the engineering work to get to a 60% design and an actual opinion of probable cost versus this worst-case number. Now, we have to do something because we are constrained by a party grant. We cannot simply turn around and sell the property. We have requirements there. We can't put a fine dining restaurant there. Whatever we do with it has to support recreation. I think in September, the town attorney who has worked with the party grant people will explain the conditions of our contract. So we understand what we can, what we can and can't do, what the ground rules are. But it's not just as simple as going, hey, referendum failed, let's sell it. It's not that easy. Once we have these 60% plans and an opinion of probable cost, then we can actually go and talk to our state and federal folks and county folks, maybe, and start talking about getting some other financing. Per my discussion with our representative Charlie Miller, you need this stuff to be taken seriously when you're requesting money. You can't simply just walk in there and say, give me some cash, I wanna build a pier. Other people are gonna be locked and loaded with this type of information, and you're competing against them. Now, while all this is going on, it's gonna allow time for the BOC, the staff, and our financial advisor to evaluate other town resources, as Ms. Ferguson said. They could be obligated to reduce this bond amount, and we're talking about cash on hand, other revenue streams, and allow us to develop some funding strategies as well, to come up with a more reasonable bond number. So when all this financial and technical work is done, I would anticipate that the town actually would conduct a survey of all property owners. I think the town needs to do it, I appreciate HBPOA doing it, and I'd encourage you to go forward, but it needs to be an official town survey, it's not impossible to do. It's not impossible to do. The HBPOA methodology could be a way to do it or hire a firm that does this. I mean, it's thirty five hundred and fifty properties. This is a doable thing. So and just kind of keep in mind that we're trying to get permission to have a home equity loan, so to speak. You don't have to use it, but it's there if you need it. And as was said before, bonds don't have to be issued. They won't be issued until after we get bids in. Makes sense, right? Because if you have a down payment, you need to know how much you're going to need to borrow the bonds, right? And even if we go out with those bonds and there is that increase, other resources can be used to pay that debt as we go along. And I'll ask our financial advisor and bond attorney to, when I'm done, correct any lies I've told. So and just a quick review, the cost drivers for that seven point three million dollars not to exceed includes two hundred thousand dollars for demolition. Now, that's because it's coupled with construction and well, as well with their worst case construction approach of using a trussel, which is a pier next to a pier, okay? Three point three for the pier structure itself. That pier next to a pier is two point four million. And then one point four million in contingency. And I believe that was a twenty five percent. When you get to your sixty percent estimate, I think the upper bound is fifteen percent. So it's my opinion, the story is not finished. I do believe the tool should be available. I do believe the town should survey the taxpayers once they have some reasonable numbers. And for that reason, I support this. It's a tool. It's not a financial death sentence. So, you know, if you have your concerns and stuff, we've had two public hearings. You need to speak to your public officials, whomever they may be at that time. Pick ones that are going to listen to you. But if we do not have this tool available, and I don't think we're going to get the pier a hundred percent financed, we'll probably have to do something. But if we don't have this tool, it'll be really hard to get something done with this pier. Thank you.
Ms. Thomas?
So I support the referendum. People are concluding the referendum with whether or not we're having the pier. I support the referendum because it lets the voters decide whether or not they want to pay for the pier. Unlike when we bought the pier property where the five commissioners decided against what the voters slash homeowners wanted. So I think it's important to have the referendum so that you, the voters, can decide whether or not we spend your money. If the ref, there's been questions about if the referendum doesn't pass, can the board still go forward with the pier? The answer is yes, but I personally would never vote to go forward with the pier and spend that money that the voters just said, we don't want you to spend. And there's a way to do it. We would never get a loan because the LGC wouldn't support a loan. But we could use our savings. And I think our savings is better spent on a lot of other things because this is an amenity. But we have a lot of other things that our savings needs to be spent on, which is sand replenishment. As some people said, FEMA is going away and the Corps told us to pound sand. So if a storm comes, we're in dire straits. We have four million dollars in our sand funds and we need fifty. So sand replenishment should be a high priority. We need a new firehouse. We've talked about that before. Some other things are storm water mitigation. We have millions of dollars in our plan that needs to be done for, so that we can drive down the boulevard. That's more important than walking on a pier. And sewer station maintenance. We just had lightning strike one of our sewer stations. And so, you know, things happen and we need to have that money for our infrastructure and not to spend it on an amenity. And occupancy, occupancy tax hasn't gone down since the pier was closed in twenty two. So the people that say that people aren't coming because of that, well, look at the numbers. We haven't, our occupancy hasn't gone down. And the other thing is that we have asked the lobbyists that we pay hundreds of thousands of dollars for. And the last two years, we put that as a priority to see if they could find grants for the pier. And both times they've come back and said, no. When we go through our budget process, we ask the lobbyists if they have that money. And they come back and they search everywhere and they say, no, there's no funds available for a new pier. So I just want everyone to know the facts.
Yes, sir. Let me try to explain the logic that I see that got us here. Convinced that we're going to need to borrow money to finance the pier with this amount on the table. That's going to require LGC approval of the loan to borrow the money. Given our prior experience, last time we went to the LGC with a loan to purchase the property, it was tough. The only way I think that we're going to have a viable chance of getting LGC approval is to have general obligation bonds where we pledge the tax, the ability to tax taxpayers as collateral, because we already committed the collateral when we bought the property the first time. That requires a voter referendum. So it's, that's where we get. And we're voting tonight to go ahead with that referendum. And in my mind, if we do not go ahead with that referendum, we're not going to be able to borrow money. The LGC won't approve it. We will basically be voting tonight not to have the pier. So we've got to, in my mind, put it up to the voters, have the referendum, let the voters weigh in. And we will be in a position, if it passes, to go to the LGC. Odds are better that they would approve it if it's, they defer to the voters. That's the best way to get potential approval. So I'm voting to continue down this path, see where it takes us. I'm not willing to kill it at this point and kill the pier basically at this point. I think we need to see where we go with the referendum.
Anyone else?
So I'd like to reiterate what Rick said, that this is a tool. The bond referendum gives us seven years to make decisions of whether we want to use the bonds or not. And once again, that amount is worst case scenario. I don't think the taxpayers should have to pay for the full amount of the pier, but I don't think it's not doable to get other routes. Donations have been offered to the town that they can raise money, get donations. A private-public partnership, I've tried personally three times to put that on the agenda and it's been removed. We have debt services coming off. B Part itself has about one point three million dollars getting ready to come off. I'm not saying that a fire station, pumping station and everything, infrastructure is not important. But if we're going to take, continue to take accommodation taxes of four million dollars, we do have an obligation to provide certain things that's recreational. We can't just put everything from accommodations tax into infrastructure. We have to provide something in order to take that amount of money. So it's got to be spread around. So that's one thing to consider too. I don't, I think if you look at the land acquisition, the parking and the campground, that revenue is paying most of your, if not all, correct me if I'm wrong, of your debt service down. The majority of the parking, well, it's going towards it. Let's put it that way. So who are the majority of the people that park there and camp there? They're not property owners. They're people from across the pier, other states and everything. So that just gives you proof that people want to help pay for things that are happening over here. So I think that if you let the community do donations, if you let private-public partnerships come in, I don't see how we couldn't raise money and bring the tax burden down on the property owners. So if you vote for the referendum, at least that gives us the opportunity to see what we can raise and bring into the, into the town.
Just a small addition to that. You know, I agree, the bond referendum is a good idea. It's just that still, as I think Mr. Carter alluded to at our last meeting, it's like taxation without representation. Mr. Parfus's idea of letting the town put out a, a survey that would ask the questions non-biasly. I mean, there's different ways to ask a question to get the answer you want. If you just ask the questions and put the facts in it, and that way then, then all the property owners will have a chance to have their input. But if you have somebody that'll skew it to the point where they're directing you to an answer, I think that would not do us any good either. But we need to hear from the, the people of Holden Beach, all the property owners, all the residents, all of us that love this place, live here and want to, to make it a better place.
Anyone, Ms. Parfus?
Sorry to delay, but the thing, and Mr. McGrany, please correct me if I speak incorrectly. Our water and sewer stuff lives under what's called an enterprise fund. I don't think we can put B Part funds into the water and sewer arena. That's a separate issue. And there are rules for what we do with the general fund as well. Just to understand that it's not one big basket of money. We have different colors of money, just like the federal government. Thanks.
That's great.
Thank you.
Any more commissioners have anything to say? All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to the motion? Unanimous approval, Madam Clerk. We are now on number nine. And Ms. Ferguson, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Back before the end of the fiscal year, the commissioners decided to move forward with working towards a site plan for block Q. That was narrowed to work on the concert venue at the last meeting last month. There were some specifics that started coming forward from commissioners for things they may like to see past the agreement of the site plan. So Mr. Baker with Pinnacle Architecture is here this evening to have a discussion with the commissioners. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, appreciate you guys letting me be here. I do not have a presentation, but last month we were here just to get ideas of what you guys would like to see in the overall master plan of the project. And I'll open the floor, just like you did with these. What would you guys, what would you guys like to see? We have done many studies of it. Parking areas, things like that, pickleball courts. What, what is your?
Mr. Parfus?
I'm the odd man out usually on this one, and I appreciate your efforts and your patience. I have stated this before. I think the whole area of block U, Jordan Boulevard, the pavilion side, et cetera, needs to be addressed comprehensively, not piecemealed. Proceeding in phases makes sense, but we got to identify all the piece parts before we figure out which phases we go forward with. And the cost needs to be identified in the ones that are most, you know, racked and stacked. Which ones do we want first and, and so on and so forth. And if we continue to do work and we haven't defined the requirements for the project, I think we're wasting your time. So just as, I mentioned this back in April, and so I'm going to, it's a little bit of broken record time. But in my mind, the goal here is for the board to start fleshing out some guidelines for our professionals for the master plan, which then we can let him use his creativity and expertise to put something together for us. I think it's wrong for us to say this many that, this size that. So as an example, just an example, what I would spell out for all those collective parcels is I would like to see up to thirty boat parking spaces. Me concentrated under the bridge. We need a firm that can work with DOT to see what they will allow. Someone who knows the turning radius of a twenty six foot boat on the trailer behind a suburban. We might say two pickleball courts as a minimum. Lighting and noise need to be considered in locating them. For starters, a stage thirty, thirty feet by forty, multipurpose. Me personally, I would say realignment of the roads under the bridge and all that road mess under there needs to be considered to obtain these objectives. And I'll just throw this in, just so people know, I have spoken to the power company and other electric utility professionals, and we can't move those big transformers down there. You're talking a million bucks. So that's a fixed object. So to me, I think it's on the, and we tried it with Parks and Rec. We tried to come up with requirements like that. But really, I think from a designer standpoint, you can correct me, we need to give you some requirements and then you need to see what you can squeeze in there. So I think it's incumbent upon the board to establish an initial set of things similar to what I listed that we would like a professional produce and then cut them loose and see what they can do instead of us trying to figure it out. So with that, that's, that's all I got to say.
Mayor Holden, can I build on that one minute?
Yes, ma'am.
Just to make sure, and I'm sure Rick's going to remember back and Randy's going to remember when we were addressing this back in April, but to keep us all out of trouble here. If the board chooses that you were going to go back in the direction of Mr. Parfus, you're looking at a bigger footprint and taking more things into consideration than just a site plan and placing things on block Q, which means you will have to send it back out for a request for qualifications. And you guys could certainly bid on it, but it falls outside the scope of work that you have currently been contracted for, for the town. So I'm just reenrating, going back to a previous so that we make sure we're all on the.
Agreed. Yes, ma'am.
We voted two or three meetings ago to proceed with the stage because all this other stuff was getting put on the back burner, the boat, the boat parking. That was two years ago. At this point, we agreed to do a stage, and I think we need to do the stage. We've got it in the budget to do the stage. We've waited two years for a stage. The concert series needs to be moved to block Q. That's what we bought it for. And we need to go with a stage at this point.
I've got to agree, if we go back here where we're actually just taking, like, we've tried to make a step forward and we're taking five back. The concert venue, I don't think will cause any issues with any other development on that piece of property. And it's, it's important, you know, I go to the concerts all the time. I mean, they're really great, but there is difficulty. You've got people dancing in the street, people dancing in the grass. Kristi trying to keep people off the pier. It's, it's really, it's, it's, it's a great thing. That's one of the best tributes to Holden Beach is the smiles on the people's faces and stuff when we have those. And having a small stage and, you know, on block Q, I don't think will, will hinder any further development. So I would, I would really, you know, in my opinion, you know, just if you propose to give us some drawings on what it might look like. And that, that way we can decide on that part of it and, and boat parking, pickleball, all the other stuff that can go there. You know, that, we're not hindering that at all. But if we don't, we're going to be stuck over there at that park for another two or three years. So, you know, it's, I'm going to let everybody else talk, but then I'm going to probably, my idea, I can go and do it now. I'd like to just make a motion that we allow him to, to do us some drawings on a, on a stage and a, and for the, for the concerts that, in his opinion, won't interfere with anything else we're going to put on that property. And again, that's something we can do, can do. And it's, it's important that we do, and I know he will keep in mind what we have idea for the rest of Jordan Boulevard and the rest of the area. So it's, it's a start. I don't want, you know, just don't go back and reinvent the wheel again. There's, there's some really nice concert venues in our area that we, I think I've seen pictures of from some of my other commissioners that is, is pretty simple and will get the job done. It'll be something we can be proud of instead of finding to have a band in a picnic area.
I need to interrupt just a minute.
Yes, sir.
You start off, say you want to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
You need to save the motion. You can't. So you make a motion and then start speaking about.
I just want to make a motion to ask Randy and his group to do us some drawings on a, on a concert venue that will not affect future development.
And now we need a second that we can talk about.
Second.
Ms. Ferguson, did you want to inject?
Yes, sir. As part of your motion, his current scope of work is the master plan. So you would need to add for him to give the board a proposal for doing those renderings for a concert venue.
Do a proposal for doing those drawings. That's, you know, a proposal doesn't cost us a thing.
That's okay. Madam Clerk, can you read back what you perceived the motion? Madam Clerk, can you read back what you perceived the motion?
Randy and his group should do a proposal for the drawings for a concert venue that will not affect their items on the site.
Mr. Smith, is that what you'd say?
Sounds good to me, Mayor.
Person who made the second, is that what you heard?
Yes, sir.
All right, now discussion. Mr. Myers?
I, I've been critical, and we've been criticized for spending money, taking actions, not having a plan. And I'm conflicted because, yes, we need a concert venue. We need one right away. It seems like if we put one there, it's a good use of it, but we're gonna have a dance floor, we're gonna have impervious surface, we're gonna need a stormwater plan. That may push some things off. I'm worried about pushing things off the table just by doing this. So I really see the need for a master plan before we can say, yeah, we can do this without causing other things to fall off the table. And, and Block Q is our last big piece of commercial property. I mean, that could be the centerpiece of the island. I want to get it right, and, and I do think we need a master view. We had one several years ago that was very good. It never happened, but a master view so that we have the comfort to know that we can do this without impacting that property for other purposes.
So Tom?
So in April, I did bring an agenda item for a comprehensive plan, and I was talked out of it because there was a little bit of money left in the budget. Let's go forward and do just the bandstand. But I do see the value of doing a comprehensive plan of the entire area, under the bridge, where the pavilion was, Block Q, and what do we really want to have there, and get somebody to say where we can put some boat parking, not on Block Q, under the bridge where the pavilion was. And I really think that we need to take our time to do this right. So that's where I am right now.
Any more discussion?
Yes. In April, we all voted to agree to move forward with the stage. It was a vote. It was agreed to move forward with the stage. We tried to do boat parking two years ago. Y'all voted against that. We tried to do the stormwater plan that we've already paid for to do, to do the whole area. So if we put pickleball courts, if we put boat parking, if we put everything on there, y'all voted against that. The stage is gonna be in the area as part of concern where the stormwater was done for the bathrooms. Is that correct?
Just to reiterate, stormwater plan that was done a couple of years ago, that stormwater plan wouldn't impede any future development in that side. But we got a permit for it, and it would, it would, you could reenact that for, if need.
The point is, is things that you voted against, now you're saying, oh, let's stop the stage and let's go back to this stuff. No, let's move forward with the stage. We promised the community the stage. The concerts are ahead. There's seventy-year-old people out there dancing like they're twelve years old again. There's people that enjoy it. I'm sick and tired of nothing getting done for two years that makes our community and our beach happy. So for once, let's freaking build a dag on stage. I don't know what the holdup is. We voted to say, yes, we would move forward with the stage. Now, two months later, oh, let's do a master plan. How many master plans do we need? How much money are we gonna waste? Hiring firms, hiring this person to say this and that and that. Our Parks and Rec Board has worked their butts off. It's come up with plan after plan after plan. He came up with the site plan. That's what you told him to do. You voted to move forward with the stage, so move forward with the stage. We need to have the concerts over there.
I mean, I don't even know if we're talking a bandstand or a twenty-four-hundred-square-foot pavilion, so it's not like this has been decided.
Mr. Parfus?
For the record, I did not vote for that in April. I was at.
It was a unanimous vote, I'm sorry.
It was not, it was not unanimous.
Okay, it was a majority vote, I'm sorry.
Of course it was, but I'm, I'm in the same camp I was, and based on my professional opinion, I think that's where it goes.
Any other commissioners want to say anything?
I get it too.
All right, we're gonna call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no?
No.
There you go, go, concert.
Three to two. Motion fails. All right.
I think you're good.
Time to pay. We're in number ten, I believe. And Ms. Ferguson, you have the floor along.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fuller and Mr. King Cannon.
Yes, sir. I know that I saw Mr. Fuller come in the room. There he is. If you want to come on up. HDR has been working on the thirty percent scope of work for the pier. You saw the draft report at your meeting in July. The final report has been presented for this meeting, and I will be happy to turn it over to Mr. Fuller for any further discussion with the board.
Mr. Mayor, for thank you for all the time. As mentioned, we delivered that thirty percent report. It's been finalized. To get those final comments about the drawings, we will integrate those if the sixty percent comes fruition. So those will be taken care of. Basically, just wanted to give you all the opportunity to ask any questions, have any discussions you all want to discuss for looking ahead. We're currently in development of the scope. Soon as that's ready, we'll be transmitting it out to be ready for the next, the meeting next month. So be on the lookout for that. We'll be submitting that soon, as already mentioned. But otherwise, just wanted to see if we have any loose ends that we tie up, up in the thirty percent.
Anyone? Any commission? Mr. Myers?
Thank you for your work. Great job. I think we sped you up to get it so that we could meet our deadline, and we did meet our deadline, and that's greatly appreciated. So as you know, where we stand is this bond referendum is gonna go before the voters within ninety days before our November meeting. You know, referendum passes, we're gonna have, move forward full speed ahead, not just sixty percent, hundred percent permits, the whole bit. We're going. referendum fails, full stop, and we regroup and figure out where we go from there. So I do not see us being able to make a decision between now and the referendum. I think, you know, that would be gambling. We'd be placing a bet on whether it's gonna pass or not gonna pass. We're talking about taxpayer money. I'm not real comfortable gambling taxpayer money. So I, I just don't think there's the benefits of trying to make any decision before we know the results of referendum is not worth the risk of, of waiting a little bit of time so that we can decide if we're going or we're not going.
Mr. Parfus?
So, Tom, I don't agree with that, in that, again, the referendum is a tool, and as I mentioned before, we need to get to, and correct me if I'm wrong, a reason, a, a opinion of probable cost where you guys will actually talk to construction firms about the most likely method of construction. You'll get more details out there. You'll have a better cost estimate for us, and if I get to, I would want you to also refine your maintenance plan. Many mentioned tonight that there was no information on the maintenance plan. There is with annual costs. There's a placekeeper for storm damage and stuff as a best guess. But if the referendum doesn't go through, as many have said, there are other ways to fund it. And again, once we have those plans, we've got something to go show people we're serious and that we have, you know, see what kind of help we can get. So for me, I appreciate your work. I think we need to accept your thirty percent as the final, and we'll evaluate those scopes when we get, get here next month. One thing I did want to see is for some of the options you had in there, make sure prices are broken out. I think I gave you comments on that.
No receipt.
All right, thank you.
Any more commissioners want to speak?
Yeah. I just want to thank you for your hard work, and I know we did hustle you to get some stuff in when it wasn't comfortable, but we appreciate that you did that for us so that we could move forward with our referendum. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Motion to receive the deliverables. Pardon?
I think Christie has something.
Ms. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. I would just say, so there was an additional B to this action item that was removed, which you guys are aware of, which was talking about future scopes. And I think some of the discussion moved into that. Just so we're all on the same page. What you guys are doing tonight is receiving the thirty percent report, and then from my chair, based on the discussions that I've just heard, when the next proposal comes in, I would say it'd be up to two commissioners to put it on the agenda if you want to entertain it in September.
Motion to accept the thirty percent deliverables from HDR.
Second.
More discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna ask you to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no?
No.
Did the chair hear correctly? Three yays, one abstention, which is a positive vote, and one nay. So directive will reflect, Madam Clerk, four to one. All righty, motion passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Dilworth is gonna bring number eleven to us, a police report. We appreciate all the hard work the department does, sir, keeping us safe.
Thank you, sir. I apologize for not being in uniform tonight. Chief caught me up, hit me up last minute. He's in class this week, so I had surgery Friday. You know, all bandaged up, so hopefully it'll be a quick recovery. But anyways, notice I have seven pages in here from the month of July. It was a pretty busy month typically. And to add two trainees into that in the field training officer program, so that could account for some of the additional numbers as well. So I would like to maybe ask, is there, are there any questions about any of the calls or citations or types of calls, anything I can drill down on for you or? Looks good. The only three things I would like to jump on real quick. Remember, traditional school starts next week. That means our school buses are gonna be back on the roads, right? They can't go but forty-five mile an hour. Just remember that it, when that stop signs out, it's a stop in all directions unless you're on a divided highway, like Highway seventeen, where grass in the middle divided. Everybody be mindful. We know we're dodging a bullet that's gonna buy out in the ocean right now. But I would strongly suggest, if you're not an Olympic-level swimmer, to stay, you know, maybe less than knee-deep. I heard on Weather Channel earlier today, Wrightsville Beach made the news for over fifty rescues today.
Yeah.
So just keep that in mind, and remember, we're also south facing, south facing. So we have a, you know, longshore current that can sometimes make our rips worse. Just those two remain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Number twelve, Mr. Evans.
It's been time.
Give me a moment. All right. I'm being brave. All right. Everybody doing okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. I did have something to say. I didn't want to interrupt y'all while y'all were disagreeing, but the, we have to wait till we have sixty percent development before we can apply the gamble. The site plan's not gonna include everything we do need. We tried, but we're gonna need, we're gonna need to get to that point. But I'm trying to get attention, but I wasn't doing very good.
I'm sorry. Do something next time.
Okay. All right. Anyway, here we are. Active new home permits are thirty-one, and we have four that are in family view that are getting ready to go out right now. Other active permits is the ones that are in the file that are on fire down there. It's five hundred and sixty. Permits issued over thirty thousand is seventy-two. Permits issued over a hundred thousand is three. That number's going down, and your, your new build is going up. Remember, I told you, watch that number. It's an indicator. Permits substantial improvements are two. Permits issued waiting for pickup are thirty-seven, and total permits are five ninety-one. Right now, we have ten permits that are in review, and that's, that includes the zoning as well. And there's a cam, camera that was issued was only one. So that means that they're not happening on Oceanfront right now. They're happening off of Oceanfront or not near the canals. Zoning issued equals eight. Notice the violations are ten. We've got six delineations and campsite inspections. There was two. I mean, campsite inspections were two. Permit, permit service for inspections was a hundred and fourteen, and the total inspections made was three thirty. So we're still busy. That's all I got for a report.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your staff and all the hard work, sir. Mr. McGrany, do we have any money?
We're in good shape, and you'll notice the line graph is not on because of.
You got one?
The numbers are back.
The numbers are back. And next month, when we have a line, one of the, the prior year's line will be dotted, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Differentiate. But everything's pressing good. A lot of the entries were not put in for July. At the time of this report, we've been very busy with audits, but that's wrapping it up, so I'll be updating that for next month.
Thank you.
Any more questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. McGrany. Ms. Ferguson, number fourteen.
Yes, sir. Starting with the Greensboro Street lift station, the sixth application for payment with our funding agency has been submitted. Based on the timeline for construction, it's eighty-two percent complete. And then there's a whole list of what's projected here for the next thirty days in the interest of time. I'm not gonna read that list to you guys, but you'll be able to see it if you don't have paper copy in your hand online after the meeting. Moving to Block Q restrooms, the contractor had to have the structural engineer back out to reevaluate some work performed. There was a meeting between the contractor, Pinnacle, and the structural engineer on eight seven. The past work period of performance included backfilling with stone, install reinforcement and vapor barrier, and pouring the concrete slab and installing masonry. And without much further ado, Mr. Caleb Chafis, who is the contractor, is here for some questions from the board on this in lieu of more on my report.
Related, how you doing? Any, any questions, updates, something I need, I'll give an answer.
So I have a question for Christie that's related. So you had sent us out some emails about quality problems. Have those all been resolved to your satisfaction?
We're still working through some issues. There was a stop work order that was issued last week, but the contractor's working through those. And I'll let either Randy or the contractor talk to what they're doing to remedy the previous situations with the blocks that had to be removed and anything that's been brought to your attention.
So, Rick, the quality issue was that the top two courses of our masonry is what we call a bonding. So the anchor bolts were too long, so Sub actually hammered them through the bonding, which called a void in the top two structures. So we had to remove those two courses, redo it, and pour back, which has been done this week. And right now, that's with a frame that's still actually on there. Mr. TM came by, reviewed, checked quality, approved everything, and we were good to go to proceed with that.
I have another similar question. I've, I heard, and I don't remember where I heard it, that there were potential concerns with the delay in the grant. Is that still an issue or?
We have, so the hundred days in the contract would take you to mid-July is when we expected this to finish. The contractor at two meetings ago was presented October. We've since met with them and expressed that September needs to be our absolute cutoff of a timeline. They need to finish for us to meet our extension.
Were we at risk of losing the grant?
As long as we meet our timeline, we should be good. If timelines continue to go over, then we would not be good.
Okay, so will we meet our timeline?
Yes, sir. The only, the only issue I see with that, so all our material we have for that particular job is in stock, and we have that. The only thing we do not have would be the decorative windows on the exterior. It will, it will be arriving right there at towards the end of September, but I still believe we'll make it happen.
You believe?
It's...
It sounds like we got a lot of money on the table here.
We're, we're, we actually, uh, talked with this supplier and, uh, paid extra for expedite the windows. That's coming out of our pocket, just to get them here as soon as we can.
Are, are you subcontracting all the workout?
About ninety percent, I guess.
How often are you on site, watching these subcontractors?
So, we, we usually have a guy there every day, and that, I think that's the biggest issue, uh, here the last month or so was the communication process between the sub and our sub. But, uh, I talked with Christie, I talked with Mister Randy, and I have been on site personally myself, you're more, uh, frequent. Just to make sure the process is going smoothly.
So, you, you're here now? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So, the, the decorative win, windows, what was the problem that they're, did you, did they not get ordered in time, or?
It's just a long lead time.
Okay, but you're aware of the, the situation that we're gonna lose a grant if this isn't done?
Again, we're, we're tracking that, and, uh, anything we can do to speed that up, even if we have to order from somebody else, we're gonna do that. But, right now, they are ordered, and they are expected to arrive, uh, I think, September fifteenth. And it's not, it's not, these aren't decorative windows, so it's not like a window that's kinda like this here. So, it can be put on, the building can be opened after, uh, or before the windows put on. It's more just a decor, a decorative.
We can open the, the building without windows?
It's not actual windows. It's, it's more of a decorative.
Okay.
So, it don't function like a...
Uh, we won't open the building until the building inspector says that we have a C O to open the building, just clarification for the public.
Have you done other similar projects like this in the county?
Yes, we've done large ones, actually.
Can you give me a couple?
Uh, we've done, uh, one in, uh, Brunswick County. We've done, uh, some in Sanford, some in...
I mean, a specific one, just an example of a specific...
Concrete salt shed in Sanford, I think it was six hundred...
A salt shed?
Yes.
Have you done bathrooms?
Uh, yes, we've done, uh, in the rest area, we've done a couple of bathrooms.
What rest area?
Brunswick County.
Okay.
Mr. Smith?
Is there any way that you can, uh, to, to maybe move this forward a little faster? You know, you've got some subs. Is there any way that you can add to those, the numbers to get some, to get some movement? I, I ride by there often, and, uh, I just don't see a whole lot going on.
Yeah, that, that's, that's what I was referring to, others. I, I've been out there more on site, and I could say, I think that's been the biggest problem with the communication. But, like I said, I, I've been out there more frequently and, uh, constant contact with the subs. Uh, right now, they're actually, when I left, at five o'clock, they were outside, uh, framing the top portion of the roof. So, they just wanna give us options to work, do work on the inside and outside now, at the same time, pretty much.
Mr. Clark? Are you still using the same subs?
Yes, sir.
So, why are we expecting the quality problems to improve if you've got the same guys? What are you doing differently? Because this is not overly complex, and what I'm hearing, it's a lot of workmanship issues.
Well, I think the biggest quality problem was that, uh...
Mr. Evans, I thought there'd been plumbing issues and other things. I mean, it sounds like, quite frankly, it's been a mess. And so, if you got the same guys doing the same stuff, why do, why should we expect it to improve?
Well, again, I wasn't on site frequently, but I had been here frequently in the past.
What's your definition of frequently?
So, I try to visit site every other day.
And how long are you on the site?
A day, all, all day.
Alright, well, I would like to see you out there a significant amount of time, so we can stop the rework. Obviously, this isn't working for you either. Doesn't work for us, but this costs you a ton of money. Mr. Meyer?
Yeah, man, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but is there anything that you think we should be aware of?
Well, I, I think, I, I, I think at this point, that they're aware there's, they may not be where they're supposed to be in time, but they are where they're supposed to be as far as design and, and the work that they've done. Uh, being, being turned down, you know what I mean, and, and having inspections and getting turned down, especially by me, is not an uncommon thing.
It's a norm, but it's...
Yes, what I'm saying is, is that at this stage, the work, the weather's supposed to be, it meets the requirements of the, the plan that we have. Uh, the, the, we're, we're watching it closely, obviously. We're watching it closely, and I think we're in a good sp, place for them to go forward. Right now, we're in a good place, but I don't know what their next week brings. But, but they, we, we were out there last time looking at the, the new bond vein. We noticed that there were some issues that had been created by the demolition work. They were very prompt, once he was on the site, they were very prompt about fixing that, and very prompt about addressing, uh, the issues that we had removed there. So prompt to the fact that I was actually impressed with how fast we had a secondary issue, which I call a major, when they got with Randy and the engineer, and when there, well, could've been a three-week delay, turned it into being a two-day delay, and they did a really good job of getting there soon. They, they may have had a horrible start, you know what I mean? We got them through the first turn, you know what I mean? I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't give up right now. I'd let them see what happens next, and I would just monitor it from here on out, as far as problems. But, it does, and there was an issue up there. I don't know what it is. He has a new guy that I've been working with on that site, and it seems to be very attentive. The other guy, I don't know, he was a pretty good guy, but I don't know what happened. But, then, I guess his name's Alan. Alan seems to be doing a good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's where we're at.
That's been a strong...
Yep.
So, I have a statement, uh, have permission from the commissioner. I own a construction company. We've been doing it since the late seventies. Do you have a backup plan for these windows? I mean, not that you're gonna decide later if it doesn't work out, do something, but do you have a backup plan now?
Right now, we're reaching out to other suppliers to see if they're, if we can get a quicker timeframe. Because, again, I think that's a long timeframe, six weeks, seven weeks, I think, whatever they say. Uh, so, we are reaching out to other suppliers that are, uh, supplying these particular windows.
Okay, so what is our proposed completion date as we're standing and sitting here tonight? What is the projected completion date that you get in your truck and go home?
So, after what me and Ms. Ferguson, uh, talked about, I think it was last week, uh, the last day in September, which is September third.
So...
Thirty days, that's September, April through November.
Festival by the sea, we'll have some bathrooms over there, you think?
He's telling us we are. Now, Caleb, put you on the spot. I'm gonna check what you're listening to, as we're back on eight-seven. What did I tell you about this project as it relates to me? What did I tell you? It was my...
That one.
Most disappointing project in twenty-four years of municipal service, right? We're, we're gonna have bathrooms by the end of September?
We will have bathrooms.
Not portable bathrooms.
Not portable.
Functioning bathrooms. Mr. Smith?
Is there, do you think it would make it more po, more possible for us to, to, to get this done in time? If you did spend more time on this, this is important to the town of Holden Beach.
Yep.
And your attendance there at the site, I think would keep it moving forward and keeping Tim on the, uh, up to date. And, and I think your chances of making this really happen, it's pretty much on your shoulders to, to make sure the guys do what they're supposed to be doing.
Yes, sir, and I'm, I'm aware of that. Like I said, Alan's a good guy on the side, but I, I am aware, we had a, uh, onsite meeting with him and with the subcontractors today, and I'm aware that I need to be on the side as we had a bit short progresses, uh, meet the expectation of required.
I would, we would appreciate that, remember.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sure, hey, did we miss the someone with... Wait a minute. So, can I have a comment?
Sure.
Um, and Christie, I, I, I mentioned this to you briefly, but since we've got, um, new Public Works Director, and we've got a lot going on Public Works, I think it'd be good to add a Public Works report out, just like we're doing here for planning and zoning and police and others. So, um, I know you said I could bring it up and we could talk about it. Um, it seems like there's a lot of, I'm, I'm sensitive. I don't wanna add to this meeting, but it'd be good to get the same kind of report like police just did. Here's the numbers, here's all the data. Are there any questions?
Well, I still have to finish my report, but I did tell him that, because he reached out and asked about that, and I can't take direction from one commissioner, so if the commissioners are interested in that, you'll need to direct.
We gotta, we got, we have a problem, procedural problem, because that's not on the agenda. And he can make that in his comments, or he can do what he did and say what he did, but the discussions can't continue. It's not on the agenda, from what I understand.
That's right.
I, I was, we're not trying to shut you down.
No, 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 I, I was under the understanding that this was when I would have a window to say that.
Where you were saying it, and that's fine, but the discussions and so forth have to be on the agenda or in your report.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Ferguson?
Okay, so, Ocean Boulevard stormwater, the Wilmington District's still getting this back at P P A. Um, the pier site draft report you guys received, or the final report for thirty percent you received tonight. Um, future scope of work discussion, again, we addressed how that could come back to the board once you receive the proposals. Um, we did advertise for the geo-bond referendum that was required, eight-three. We have another advertising that the clerk's been directed to do, and the public hearings were held this past Saturday, and then again tonight. Um, the town did receive the, um, North Carolina Coastal Communities Program Technical Assistance Award. That money of seventy thousand dollars does not come to us. It goes to the firm that was selected to work with us, which is E S P Associates, and we do have a, um, meeting with them for staff on September ninth. Um, as far as employee updates, Chris, stand up, please. Chris Benton, who prefers to be called Beef, is our new Public Works Director. That is his name since childhood. You guys can try to do a different one, which I did for several weeks, and it just comes back around that he just says, please just call me Beef, so... Um, welcome. You've done a great job so far, because we've certainly had some bad situations here in the past week. We're glad to have Officer Camara back after her surgery. Um, and then I have department shout-outs here, and I know you guys don't know what that means, and I purposely didn't wanna write that out. So, this is just a tidbit of what is done every day that nobody really pays attention to, because it's easy to send, not that I get that many of them, but it's easy to send a complaint. But, what these people have been working on that I'm gonna call out, that is not their everyday job. Planning and inspections has been doing a fire department research, A D A agreement, and A D A self-assessment, and continues to work on those. The police have been short-staffed with officers down through injury and, um, other issues, and still provided additional education programs this summer for the public prior, prior to the concerts, and developed the retention and recruitment program that was presented to the commissioners. Finance and admin were hit with a double whammy, where we had interview closeout and the auditors here at the same time, which I'm not sure has ever happened before, but oh, boy, was it fun. Um, Heather has been hit with many, 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 many public records requests, and additional meetings regarding personnel, the geo-bond, and adding things to our website, which is outside of the normal tasks that she has to do for every day. Public Works, just in the last week, two stations, we had pump issues, where we had one that had a fire at pump station two with a pump, and lightning to hit another pump station. Beef's comment to me was, if it can break at Holden Beach, it's going to. And, moving to seasonal groups here, don't wanna forget our beach rangers who are out on the beach. There have been complaints that have come to these commissioners about, we don't understand, why do the beach rangers ride right up next to where we are? Well, it's because they have to do their job, and one of them asked me to share this picture, which I'm going to. Everybody thinks they should ride up next to the dune. If the ranger had been up next to the dune, they would not have been able to see this hole, because they tested it. This is something dangerous for all of you, if you're out and encounter this, especially once it gets darker. So, just to reiterate, this staff, I put them up against anybody, anywhere. They do a great job, and I appreciate them. You should too.
Thank you.
As far as dredging, I was updated by the Corps at the shallow draft inning, inlet meeting at the end of July, that the planned July-August dredge has now been moved to September, October. We got pushed to the side because there was emergency dredging in other states. So, Maryland and, I believe, Virginia. Moving to other, the other side of dredging, which is what places sand on our beach with the A I W W Crossing Project and the Ben Widener that we now get every two years. Um, I presented to the commissioners, and this is not on this page, because all this is since the time of the report, so I'm just talking to you now. Um, so, at the budget works up, you'll remember, I brought you some options on the Ben Widener. The cost was one point five million, of which we would pay the twenty-five percent. You guys said you wanted to wait until the bids were opened. I did receive an email last Friday on the fourteenth, that they still were estimating the one point five million, which ours would be twenty-five percent. We would apply for seventy-five percent from the state. And, um, I said, when the bids are open on the twenty-second, send us the real number, because that was your desire. So, I anticipate that you will be acting on a number potentially at your September meeting, where we would have to do a budget amendment to add funds for the Lockwood Folly dredging line. Um, additionally, Congressman Rouser sponsored the Lockwood Folly Inlet as an appropriations request, one of his, what used to be earmarks this year for one point two million. It did pass the House Appropriations Committee at nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, we'll continue to watch how the federal budget unfolds. FEMA, on the House side, they passed H R four-six-six-nine, which is, um, asking that FEMA become an independent cabinet-level agency. There is no current Senate companion bill for that. Um, and then, as we move to the, um, goals worksheet, the spreadsheet, I would just update that the part changed from the time this went out, so future scope was not considered as part of the pier tonight. That would be up to the commissioners to add to the agenda. And, um, based on the week we've had, I can begin tracking needs and costs. Those would be pumps, or pump station, for Beef.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Yes, ma'am.
On the Greensboro Street Lift Station, can you add, every month now, what, what is the completion date on that?
Um, the completion date is the end of October.
Alright, just to make sure we're keeping on track with that. And my other question was, on the North Carolina Resilient Coastal Communities Program, do you have, um, what are you planning to do with, asking them to do with that seventy thousand? Is it gonna be stormwater, is it gonna be?
So, we don't get to ask them to do anything. It was part of the scope that was presented to you guys, and then they take what they do as part of that grant, and they look at everything as far as resilience and what the town needs. So, it's not an ask that I have. They work with the town to coordinate what they're gonna work on.
Alright, great. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, and Beef, we know your father's in the hospital. Our prayers. I'm with you. Give him our best. Those of you who may or may not know, but Beef's father is Jerry of B and B Tower. Okay, number fifteen, Mr. Evans and Ms. Ferguson?
Well, I'm good to be here. Didn't think they could figure out with this three-hour presentation. Okay, well, the board tasked us, uh, Christie, by putting this where? Where did this end up? This ended up on a, on a goals, an objective. Yeah, and it ended up somewhere around the top of that goals and objective list. And somehow, we got to this point, and the idea here, uh, I guess, was to try to figure out what we had, what we needed, and what might get us there. And I'll start off by go ahead and badmouthing what we have, okay? What we have is the building that was built, and I'm sure when it was built, it was built, and it's a satellite station. It's partially manned some of the time. It's, it's old, it's antiquated. It's, uh, has to be repaired every time we have one of our sunny day had flooding, if you know what that means. Um, it's not probably one of our best facilities, but it is also one of our... It's not probably one of our best facilities, but it is also one of our critical facilities. And it is actually important to your insurance because of its location and the requirements under OSI. If I say anything wrong, you guys. Oh, okay. All right, well, he promised me he'd be here. All right, so here's what we have, the twenty twenty-two cents of pound at one thousand fifty-four permanent residence. So with a daily season on average between eight thousand and eighteen thousand. And we get there by averaging the number of bedrooms in each home that we have a structure. And then we multiply that by what would be the maximum occupancy. And anybody that's been over here in the summer knows that we're pretty much reaching that. So we're, we're between eight thousand and eighteen thousand, depending on what part of the terror season we're in. And that's how many people that we're servicing here. Well, I, I would go further, but from everything that I've learned from a municipality our size, you can use Galveston as one because they were close to us for a while, and they've had a fire station for a long time. The town no longer, no longer needs to rely on this satellite station. There needs to be a fire station here. All right, so the town, the town, the town staff has a number of structures that says that twenty-six oh five. And we've got eleven hundred eighty-six structures west of the fire station, fourteen nineteen structures, fourteen hundred nineteen structures east of the fire station. Vacant lots is a hundred and seventy-two west and three forty-six east. That, that facility is almost exactly where it needs to be, based off of future development and the length and, and how far you have to go. I talked to Doug, and we're pretty sure it's right in the area where they need it. The town is eight point three miles long, and of course, it's got quite a few acres in it with one primary thoroughfare on, on and off the island, and on-island critical facilities, town hall and lift station. So we even had that happen the other day. We had a fire. And so if we, if we are going to rely on this during a critical time of that satellite station, we are really putting ourselves at risk, I believe, based off of the conditions that we have just about every day during the terror season. And we have other conditions too. And I don't remember if I put it in here, but one of those conditions, and it was right there in file, but full-time versus part-time staff, the factors are, are in here. But it's also, number five is a factor that we really should consider by having a fire station, a full-time fire station on the island. And some of you have witnessed it firsthand. But traffic during the terror season is very important to an average age of the town residents. I have to say when people, I'm like ten years older than everybody I'm working with now. I'm like the only person until I come in this room with y'all. So the length of the island is, is an issue. It really is. Response time for water rescue and seconds matter in that, and that's very important. And where the fire station is now is the only place that would be better. I don't want to say it, but there's another place that would be closer to an access. But this is about as close as we can get, getting on the beach. All right, response time for loss of property, density and setbacks. I, I keep remembering a couple of years ago, and I don't remember how far back was. Doug might remember, but we had a fire that started at a house on the second row, and the wind was blowing. And it burnt decking boards four houses down. And the only thing I think that kept it from spreading because our setbacks were only five feet on our property, our houses on top of it. Yeah, I don't know that we've ever burnt one or had one that caught on fire that didn't burn at least two more. And so it's important that we have everything we need here. And, and I think that's the most important thing. I think that we're only like seconds away from having a fire in one of these older homes, and we, we end up on the news, like I saw Fox News, I don't know if it was O'Gallan or who it was, but they, they showed all those buildings burning. I just don't see how we, we actually dodged that. That particular fire, we dodged it because it was a vacant lot, and there was a solid fence around the pool. The blowing embers that were waist high, that were blowing as hard as they could, got stopped by that fence. But it burnt holes in that fence. So I think we were lucky there. I can only imagine what would happen on oceanfront in dry time. So I think we need to consider that. Needs assessment, here's what we came to. I discussed it with David Ward. He sent me his needs assessment. I looked against other municipalities that were like us to see what they had. I used the OSFM's recommendation and went down to Winnaboo and looked at what they had. And that's where we came, come up with these numbers that we have. We're looking for three bays that are fifty by fourteen by fourteen. That's the minimum. We have to make them fifty by twenty by fourteen to accommodate the North Carolina Building Code and their ability to get around. So the numbers are calculated off of what we need, not off of these. Decontamination room, a tool room, sleeping for seven people, and one office. When I put it all together, these are semi-private rooms. So if you have seven people, that means you have the ability to go to pain. And of course, we have the office. We have an exercise and weight room. We don't want our, our firemen to be like me. Oh, we have a day room, a conference area, a slide or a fire pole, and a location will, this location will, well, the the minutes will part in soon. There's no way. Our location that we have at this point, we can't put all that on one floor. Now, I can't see my own numbers because I'm old, but the usable square feet is, is it's, it's eight thousand seven hundred fifty-seven, and that's accommodating the camera buffer setbacks, which means that we may be able to gain those back, and you know something about rules. The total square footage is nine thousand six hundred and fifty-seven. The total impervious is seventy-two hundred square feet for the structure. And then there's a staging area out front for setting the fire trucks up, and that's twenty-five twenty. We did a cost of construction based off of the, off of the category four cost estimate, which is, I had to use a four. I probably should have stayed with one, but we went a little bit farther than the, than the use requirements to get there. I was actually over into usable language. So the cost of construction is three thousand, three million sixty thousand. And then the cost of site improvements and staging the area, that staging area is three hundred fifteen thousand. So the apparatus base were thirty-four hundred square feet. The lobby and entrance is a hundred and seventy-five square feet. Restroom and public visitor is sixty square feet. Storage is four hundred square feet. Vertical circulation for stairs and elevators, a hundred and fifty square feet. And of course, that includes the capability to put a slide or a pole in there. They're, they're using both now, and I guess that would be something for an architect to decide. Circulation, hallways and corridors, I've got zero square feet, but I have additional areas that we can use. And those are usually, you, you got to kind of calculate them. Manny will tell you that. But I, but I put two hundred square feet in there, but we do have area left. Total ground floor area will be thirty-four hundred plus a hundred and seventy-five plus sixty plus forty plus one fifty, which puts our ground floor at four thousand one hundred eighty-five square feet. The sleeping quarters will be on the second floor, it'll be six hundred ninety-six square feet. Hitching and dining will be five hundred forty square feet. Recreation area, three hundred square feet. Administrative office, a hundred and twenty square feet. Fitness room at five hundred square feet. Mechanical and electrical room at a hundred square feet. Vertical circulation for stairs and elevators, once again, is a hundred and fifty square feet. And the circulation for the hallways and corridors is usually, I guess those guys calculated twenty percent. I didn't make that number up. And of course, the functional areas are basically two thousand two hundred fifty-six, and then the rest of it's four hundred forty-one. Now, what's important here is, is that there's more. I put a thousand square feet, but there is more usable area on the top of this site than there is at the bottom. And the reason being is we can cantilever there, and we can get some more room out in front over the trucks when we stay. So we're only talking about that amount, but if we need to come up with more room, there, there, there is a bathroom that would probably have to accommodate, be accommodated up there that's left off of that. David brought my attention today, but we do have the exterior there. We can put, we can put a good fire station on that side. It can go there. It's going to require a little bit of tedious work. Beautification committee is going to lose a garden. But the totals are right there. The actual total of impervious will be seven thousand forty-two. And then it says, it says their additional work would allow for four bays, and a staging area would be reduced. And what can happen there is that if we get approval, and I know I didn't talk to y'all about today, Doug, but you can actually have, we can actually have some of your equipment sitting on an exterior overhang or something to that. You know, maybe we can have something that's not as expensive to get a fourth area there, or like a truck or something to go to. But the site will accommodate. I think that the numbers prove that we need a full-time that fire department. I mean, I don't think you can argue against.
The parking for the trucks that the fire people come in?
Yeah. Where they truck, the way it's going to happen is it's going to have to turn it from the stage. It, it never made sense to, to put them in Will's front yard when they're leaving. So it really needs to be turned, so they're, they're coming right out. So that side will now become available for, for staging or putting people there. It flips. It actually works. But if anybody had any questions, I'm glad to ask. I think you're, you're to a point where you need to decide whether you want to put it on the CIP so that maybe staff can start looking for some money.
So I have a couple of questions. How many do we staff right now at one time? At like, for the twelve hours that you staff right now, how many, how many firemen are there? So we're going from two to how many? Seven?
When you design the building, so if we have a storm or something, y'all don't evacuate the island that you can accommodate your staff, we'll make them stay there. So you got to have a name to place to stay and sleep. So you want a building where if you have a storm or something, you can staff more people there, not necessarily. And as we grow, you want a place for them to be able to stay as well. Two is what we're working with now. Ideally, we would like to get to where we have three people on duty at a time at every station.
So is the plan for, let's say, three, three people, twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year?
Yes, ma'am.
That's the plan for this new fire station?
Well, that's the only two right now.
Right, but you'll be able to staff that? That's a big question for me because I've heard you have problems staffing the one that's up by Food Line.
Well, right now I have six full-time employees is what, is what I have budgeted. Right now I'm down four people, just like the police department. I'm having trouble finding people. You hire them, they stay, I train them up, and then they go to a better location where they got better benefits and stuff. So they, but I, I would just move the two people that are there now from May to September would stay there twenty-four hours a day.
Sure their family would love that. My other question is about the funding. So I'm questioning, how did you fund the fire station up there by the Food Line?
We, we borrowed six point, or three point six million dollars. The rest of it is money we've been setting aside for years to, towards building the station.
So we all pay a fire fee as part of our taxes, right? Would some of that money be coming towards the fire station to be built on, on the island?
No, ma'am. That property belongs to the fire department. This property will be a belongs to the town.
So the property does, but the fire station?
Yes, ma'am. We're contracted with you to provide the service. That, it, the town, and suggestions we were made to, also to TM and staff was that if you say at some point you could decide to be your own, have your own fire department. We're just providing apparatus and the personnel, the staff, the building. Y'all providing the building for the, for the equipment to be into and for the staff. I don't have, I don't have enough money coming in to do, to do that. I'm just going to be honest with you. I just, I don't have.
It was, it was never, it was never the intention of the planning department to believe that they would be paying for it. You follow what I'm saying? That's, it was never the intention. They would be managing, staffing it, but it would be our fire department. It's going to be yours.
It would still be town property, and at any point if y'all decide y'all don't want to contract with Tribe Beach Fire Department to provide the service, the building is y'all's.
I need to interject with permission from the commissioners to speak. Brunswick County Mayor's met last week up at Brunswick Electric. And the subject was fire fees and how it's going to be changed. It's up in the air. No decisions have been made by the county commissioners. The options, there's some variables, and I didn't bring my notes with me. But the bottom line is there are nineteen towns in Brunswick County. Some towns have their own fire departments. There are some volunteer organizations, fire departments, threaten to go wrong here, Mr. Todd. Each fire department has their unique situation. And Holden Beach is one of those unique situations that really is unlike, I believe, any other beach community. Ocean Isle Beach has their own fire department. And I was involved with getting that location for the town. And no, I didn't get rich on that one either. And I didn't make a hundred thousand dollars on that or the pier anywhere else. But Ken Aramis and his wife, I remember I owned those lots, and I went to them and begged them on behalf of the town to make them available to the town. And as said earlier, that location was dictated to the town. It was not a choice made by the town. It was dictated to the town. This is where the fire department has to be. And that was from the powers that be in Raleigh that told the town that's where it had to be.
At the time of the station when built, you couldn't be more than four miles, any, that was my. At the time, four miles was the limit that you had to go, and that pretty much is that in the middle of the line.
Some advantage of being old, we can remember stuff. And what he said is exactly right. So, yeah, that location is good. And, and I'm glad we're looking at some solutions for it. And I believe in your paperwork that you turned in, I think you stated it was eight point five miles.
Eight point three.
Eight point three miles long the island. But if you go from tip to tip by way of vehicle around, I think it's closer to nine. So that four miles by using the station on the mainland to accommodate the east end up to the four mile line, which now you're saying is five miles from that station, driving up the causeway or down the causeway, and then taking a right wherever that five miles would end, and also starting from the west end, coming back this way wherever the five miles end. So have you identified that space, which is now bigger that we could locate?
There is a, there's a square block. There's a, I did, I had that square block laid out. I have it on the plan somewhere, but I don't recall when I did it because I just liked that. I liked the spot where it was at, but I do have it, but I, I don't have it with.
Yeah, I would be interested in seeing where those lines, the new five mile line is this way and this way.
Right now, the town has its own separate district. So that station covers the whole island. They're not taking account the station on the mainland side.
Because of the five mile extension?
Not because of the five miles, just because the town, at, at one point, and they changed the rules a little bit.
Yeah.
But at one point, the town can be its own separate district and can get a lower insurance rating based on it being a separate district. So at one point, by the town being its own separate district and it being totally hydrated, it could be under one rating and not have to be split. And if it'd been incorporated with part of what we had over there, it could have caused it to be split up. And the station is right now, if you look at the insurance. And the station is right now, if you look at the insurance map for it, it's still separated. The town has its own separate district and
Okay.
the district of it has its own separate area.
So
the and by doing that, it also doesn't cause y'all to have to change anything. Like I said before, you can somehow decide y'all want to have a whole new fire department. Don't have to change anything. The district already defined as one separate district. If you just, everything will move back to the same.
All right. But what I really want to convey to all of you here and those that are listening is it's getting ready to change. Until we know what the county commissioners of this Brunswick County decide what to do, it makes it awfully difficult for you guys, us guys and girls to know what to do because, um, whether we decide to go on our own or whether the county is going to offer to take everything over and put us all together in one big district or whatever, there are a lot of options out there. And the Fire Chiefs Association for Brunswick County had a representative at the meeting and, uh, two representatives at the meeting to educate the mayors of Brunswick County and some of the options that were perceived to be considered by the county commissioner. And no one in the room, the mayors or the fire department representatives, no one seems to have any confidence in knowing what the county commissioners are thinking in regards to tax districts or however they're going to do it. It's up in the air. But I think, and chief, my impression was coming out of that meeting that somewhere between now and January first, some decisions may be made. Is that kind of?
They weren't going to have it by the time commissioners have their retreats so they can change all the fire fees to some kind of fire service district or fire tax district.
Yeah.
And Kenny Mandro, while I'm a Dan, is recommending a countywide district. He don't want it separated into individual or regional district.
And one thing that needs to be said, and I think everyone in this room will agree that the coastal communities, the islands have been the whipping post forever for providing funds for the Brunswick County. You know, we pay the town, we pay the town taxes and then we pay the county taxes. And the property values on the islands of Brunswick County are so much higher than they are proportionally to the inland properties, you know? And, and most of us old folks don't have children going to the schools and all this other stuff. So, you know, that's a whole nother subject. But be prepared. There's a lot of representation in impactful representatives that are looking out and arguing in behalf of those that live in the high, high valued property areas. Cause it's disproportionate what we pay. And, and that's being taken into consideration in the formulas that are being considered of, you know, how they're going to tax us or assess us or whatever. So I don't know what's going to come out of it, but I'd like to make sure that that I get the point across. We don't want to get locked into anything until we know what the county is going to do. Yes, sir.
No matter which way the county goes, they cannot make the town come in without the town considering.
That's correct.
So if they decided to go to a countywide fire tax district, me, the fire chief to represent the town, I would not recommend it to y'all no more.
Yeah.
Because just like the man you're saying, a lot of your money is going to go elsewhere into town. Y'all can try, y'all can try to write a contract individually in the fire department or you just want to go in the fire department whichever way y'all choose to go. You contract with us individually and if we come up with an amount, we do fair and for what we serve the town.
Well, one other thing needs to be said too. Especially in recent years, the town of Holden Beach and Tribe Beach Fire Department has had a wonderful relationship. Uh, in every way, I don't know of any way that we're having any difficulties. The chief's been, his father was, was chief before him. I mean, the relationship has grown to what I consider now is the best it's ever been. And we appreciate you guys.
I'm not waiting in the F case that we want to quit contract with y'all. We, we love serving the town. We enjoy what we do over here. And, but, you know, we, I'm not be, I'm doing my new deal. It's just the fire chief to recommend something to you that would not be a good thing.
Yeah. And one, one more thing too, and the police, I mean, the fire departments clearly understand that we do still have the issue of the water pressure and especially in the month of July on the west end of the beach. So, Mr. Myers?
Yeah, I, um, my understanding, the transition Brunswick County is planning now is to go from the fire fee to a fire tax. And the fire fee is calculated on needed square footage and the fire tax will be based on property values. Is that?
Nothing but talk.
Okay. But if that goes that way, whenever you go to property values, as you said.
Great. Service district or a fire tax, whichever one they tried to do.
Okay.
And there's a difference. The statute lays out different things whether it's a service district or a fire tax. So the amounts they can charge. And, but it's based off the property value.
Okay. So my assumption would be if it's going to be based on our property values, we'd be paying more than we would. I don't know what we pay now for property, for fire fee, all the property owners with that total, Daniel, you can come up with that, I assume. And whenever they come up with their new tax, we can say how much I grew. But it's on our tax bills. Just add them up off all our tax.
It's on the Brunswick County, not Daniel's.
Oh, well, okay. No, okay. But still, as, as property owners, what we will be paying for fire is likely to go up dramatically if they go to a fire tax based on property values, just because three thousand square foot home has higher property value than a three thousand square foot home someplace else in Brunswick County.
That will be correct.
Okay. Okay. So I, I just reaffirming what you said. We need to keep our eye on this.
Yeah. For example, if you've got an oceanfront lot at a million dollars, you're going to get taxed on that too, if they write it that way.
We, you're engaged with, I mean, it seems like we need to be.
I'm engaged.
Okay.
I don't get to vote on it, just like I don't get to vote here.
But could you take the action to come back, um, whenever you have one of those meetings and give us a summary of what's happening?
Just one of the many things that Dumble Wowls out there doing.
I know, but we don't know, we never hear anything about any of that stuff, but we never get a summary report of all that stuff that you say you're doing.
If you ask me, I'll tell you.
Well, we like to have it as a general thing that when you go to one of those meetings, you come back and, and give us a summary of what happened.
She gave me permission to talk. Okay.
I kind of like get back to the work you guys have done.
Uh, well, we, for the cost estimates, we use four hundred, four fifty, and that's, uh, that's in line with what everyone else uses. The falling items are considered in the cost amount. We used, uh, we, we know what we're going to have to have there. We're going to have file and file cat support, three story construction. We're going to be using type two or three with the sprinkler system relative to the habitable second story area. Part of the no collar building code requirements. Right now we have, we'll need flood inundation prevention. So that'll require probably a hardened lower structure with water resistant materials up to the B F E. Right now we have, we have a building that we repaired numerous times. We have onsite will be a hundred percent stormwater retention for impervious areas so we can be good neighbors. Uh, demolition of the existing structure. We've got the front staging area for the fire trucks, the lobby area and the bathroom, and the total cost is three million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Now that's, that's based off of a category four, which means there's a, there's a forty percent to thirty percent variable in that number, depending on how accurate I am with the stuff that I do. So if you want to get more accurate, you got to keep going down the scale. So if you hire Randy, you can get maybe down to three and get a little bit more accurate. And if you decide to come up with a plan, you'll be just like you just told, uh, Mr. Fuller, you'll be down there where you're getting a little bit closer to what the actual number is. All right. Now, this is, this is what I did. It's a class four level project for definition. It's a one to fifteen percent. It's in usage. It's a study or feasibility. And of course the methodology is written there for what we use. And there's the expectation of accuracy. So I would, uh, I would like to say this in regards to get off of that slide, please. Those are turned made fun of. I would like to say this, this is something we can do. I, I, the fire fees and all that, we know that that's in the hands of others and we got to, we got to get there. And we got to wait and be patient. We, and I guess you guys can do your, do the politics. But here's what the planning staff can do for you. We just had a meeting last night over the, the regional hazard mitigation plan. We're, we're actually have a mitigation plan and every five years it has to be updated. And every five years we have to put what we're going to do in there in this hazard mitigation plan. This has a mitigation plan. It has a lot of stuff in it that we get credit for on the C R S, which is the credit rating system that helps reduce your insurance here on the island for your flood insurance. And right now we've got a really good, we're down there to a six. The only way we're going to get better is to have things in there that helps. One of the things that will help us a bunch is to have this, we only have to have it in the capital improvement plan. And we get credit for it in the hazard mitigation plan. We got credit for the lift stations because it's a critical facility that we are making it more resilient. So you will get credit and points if we put this in the capital improvement plan. I, I can't speak to the other stuff, but the mere fact that we've started working on it, we've studied it, it's in the planning, y'all reviewed it. We can make it part of the hazard mitigation plan. If you put it in the capital improvement plan, it will actually follow. Even if you leave it in there and do nothing, it will follow as long as we talk about it, discuss it, and we get points. So that's what I can tell you will work. So.
Are you concluded?
Yep.
Chief, Tim, I'd like to thank you for doing this job for us. This is, I've been asking about this for, since I've been here. This is exactly what I was looking for. We got a statement of requirements. We have a cost estimate, so we have some idea of what we're up against. And now we can start chasing possible funding issues and, and what we need to do, probably need to do some design work at some point to get grants, but this puts it on the map and, um, I'd like to make a motion that we do include it in the C I P.
I'll second that.
Bear with me just a minute. Madam Clerk, can we do that?
Add it to the C I P? I think they would just have to do a, just like it would be a regular amendment since it's part of the budget. We could just bring it back to you next month.
The reason I was questioning it because the public has, didn't have a chance to comment on it.
I think, would that work for you, Daniel? If it is part of the budget, bring it back as an amendment like we would typically do for a budget amendment, bring back the amended C I P next month.
I think that'd be fine.
It'd be a couple of years out, I would think.
Yeah, it's not in the budget till it's a quarter of a year, right?
But the C I P is adopted as part of the actual budget.
Yeah.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. You ready to vote? Um, I think, I'm just curious what year we would put it in. It's a year away, five years away?
I mean, the fact that we discussed it, if you talk about putting it in next year's C I P, next year's budget and putting it in there. And if that's your plan, because it's one of your goals, you're going to get there. We still get credit for it under the hazard mitigation plan because you voted on.
Put it, put it three years south.
Yeah.
Okay. It can move later if it needs to.
Well, whatever you want to do, I don't care.
So do you want it, it's fine if it's in next year's C I P or do you want me to do the amendment to get it in this year?
I think you have to get it in this year's to get the credit.
No, no, we don't.
Oh, we don't.
Yeah, as long as you vote to put it in next year's budget, we'll get credit for the hazard mitigation.
That works.
Cause the hazard mitigation, hazard mitigation is a five-year plan. It's a five-year plan and we put it in there. It'll be something we accomplish later. So we get credit.
So you're saying that we don't have to change the C I P that we adopted this year. Next year, when we do the budget process, we add the fire station in for the three point six million. That's your suggestion. Do you want to withdraw your motion?
Do we need with, is that appropriate?
That's what he's saying. Doesn't have to be in updated to this one. Just put it in when we do the next, because we talked about it. We don't have to put it in immediately.
Well, I, I don't want to lose sight of it. A lot's going to change between now and the next budget meeting. And quite honestly, he's just going to add it to the table, right? It's not, it's going to be an unfunded requirement. You can put it in F Y twenty-eight or so, and then it'll be on the map. So I would prefer to go ahead and get it in there for visibility because as other funding requirements pop up and we're looking at that table for where all the money's going, I, I think it needs to be there. That's my opinion.
I, I agree. I, but I, I think three years is realistic. I mean, there's no way realistically next year. Right. We can always move it, but I think three years is a reasonable place to put it in the set for whatever that is, twenty-eight or.
Right, but I feel. Yeah, I, I, yes, but I want to see it chiseled into the C I P for now. So I'd like to go ahead and just bring it back as an amendment.
I'm sorry. Are you comfortable with the motion that's on the table? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Vote, say no. Unanimous, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you for all your work.
Mr. Myers and Ms. Thomas, number sixteen.
Uh, yes, this is the carryover from last month. Um, we had some concerns. I had the town attorney follow up on those concerns and, uh, give her advice. So I would like to go ahead and move, make a motion to task the audit committee with advising this board regarding potential improvements to the collection of occupancy tax revenues.
A second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say no.
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 Three to two, Madam Clerk. Number seventeen.
Yeah, that's the second. I, I put them in two different ones. Um, so this is, uh, the motion to task the audit committee with advising the B O C regarding potential improvements to the management of the B part fund balance.
A second.
Discussion. Anybody? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say no. Three to two, Madam Clerk. Number eighteen. Mrs. Ferguson?
Yes, sir. So we never get money back from the core. This is a first time I've ever seen this, but they had underruns in their budget for A I W W crossing in federal fiscal years twenty, twenty-two and twenty-four. What you have for you here is a budget amendment that addresses that. The county did provide us funding that we passed to the state that then went to the core as part of these projects. And because those were different fiscal years, the breakdown that the state provided at the time and that we had to match as the local, which would be us in the county differs across these years, but it's been broken down for you. And basically we'll need to send fifty-two thousand dollars back to the county, a little over fifty-two. And then what you're doing as the rest of your budget amendment is because this funding was originally taken from the Beach and Inlet Capital Reserve Fund to move to be part to fund out of the dredging line, I think it's appropriate for it to go back to that fund. So it's a two-part motion that you're saying that you agree to the budget amendment as far as sending the money to Beach and Inlet Capital Reserve Fund and making sure that we remit what we need to back to the county.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash thirteen.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say no. Unanimous, Madam Clerk. Okay, we got, um, Ms. Ferguson.
I don't think this is me.
Motion to go into closed session.
We got public comment. Public comment. Okay. This is an opportunity for anybody to speak about anything you want to. Raise your hand.
So I didn't have this on my comments, but I did appreciate one thing.
You need, you need to get it up for the record.
Oh, chat hawk twelve twenty-two Ocean Boulevard West. But I do appreciate your comments on some of the meetings you attended. But I do agree with Commissioner Thomas. We don't really have an idea of your monthly meetings and things that you go to. We don't see reports back or emails back to the community. I think that would be great since we do, know you do a lot of things for this community. We'd like to hear what they are. So that's one of the things I'd like to address. The other thing is, I think it was mentioned that in September. The other thing is, I think it was mentioned that in September, the town attorney is going to be spelling out the LGC requirements. I think anybody here or anybody listening, if they want to be here for that meeting, because that does actually have a lot of impact, what we can or can't do. And this just, we did finish the site plans discussion. You guys got a little angry at one point and got a little heated, but I think they were asking for, hey, what is it you wanted to see in it? And we just stopped what the guys wanted to see in the site plans. So I think you'd need to bring that back up, because you never really continued that conversation. That'll be it.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
Little Carter, 108 Starfish Drive, once more. I'd just like to say congratulations to Bee for being here. The fire station, as far as it goes, Tim knows, I've talked to Department of Environmental Quality, Kama and the Corps of Engineers, the town of Holden Beach owns the property where the new pump station is, corner of Greensboro and Ocean Boulevard. We own from the pump station over to the houses. They said that we can use that for emergency services. So we'd have a beautiful big lot, and chief's, chief's parameters for the fire station are between Fayetteville Street and 700 block, so it falls into those parameters. All we'd have to do is bulkhead it and get the lot ready for what time, whatever time you wanted to build a fire station. That way, we can retain the property that we already have, that is the fire station now, for Bee and his guys from the mechanicals department, and, and, and they could put equipment in there. They could use it for lunch, they could use it to go to the bathroom, and they, we would not have to waste a good facility, which I live across the street from, where the water gets knee deep. I've waded through there with all these guys before, and it's on a corner lot, there's absolutely zero parking, except for the little bit in front on Ocean Boulevard, in case everybody wanted to come over. Whereas Greensboro Street, you can park them all the way down the side, have restricted for fire to park the parking. You can put enough, a big enough building on that lot to put the fire ladder truck. You can put a lot of things there. Tim could design a nicer building that doesn't have to be two stories if it didn't want to. But it's a waste not to ask for it. And the Kama, DEQ, and the Corps of Engineers told me all that the commissioners need to do is ask for it, but that takes three asks, okay? And then we would have a big, beautiful new lot with the fire station on right beside our pump house. We'd have generators there for water. It doesn't go over water, the neighbor to the pump, neighbor to that lot's right back here, he can attest that when the water gets high, Ocean Boulevard's still dropping. And as far as it goes, the Property Owners Association has 600 members, I've been there for the last few meetings, it takes 30 members to have a forum, so 16 people decide what happens at Property Owners Association. 600 properties is less than, it's about 20% of the houses on the island, the properties on the island. So I'm tired of hearing about a mandate from the property owners. The only thing you have is you've got an email list and you're a group of people, most of you come from the same place, everybody's been a member, nobody wants to be a member anymore. That's why there's only 20% of the population of Holden Beach or the tax of the homeowners that are members of the Property Owners Association. So you are not a mandate, and you need to listen to these other taxpayers that are here, because there's another, you know, another 3,000 plus properties. And so 600 people does not make any of you god. I'm tired of hearing this mandate stuff. But the fire station, you need to look at that Greensboro thing, ask Tim if you look into it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, number 20, mayor's comments briefly. Enough has been said about hurricanes. We know that tis the season, and it's not tis the season to be jolly. It's a, tis the season to be on the lookout for storms and prepare accordingly. And again, encourage all of you that may not be signed up for the email blast from the town of Holden Beach, whenever we send this information out, please consider signing up for that so we can keep you better informed. A lot of times, the information that comes across the news media is not necessarily correct, and especially in this AI world that we're in now. Anyway, enough said about that, but thank you all for being here, and Mr. Myers, Lord George.
Thanks for coming, thanks for people listening online, thanks for being involved and for providing your input during the public information session. Have a good evening.
Mr. Smith?
I'd like to thank our police staff. Over the past couple of weeks, I've noticed that they have stopped quite a few more low speed vehicles for kids not being in car seats and seatbelts not being worn. And again, that is a, that's a blessing to see that, because they're going to save somebody's life. Other than that, I just am sometimes disappointed with some of the things that go on here at Holden Beach, and that's about all I'm going to say about that.
Ms. Thomas?
Well, I thank everyone for coming out, it was a good turnout for the public hearing, and based on the vote tonight, there will be a referendum on the ballot on November 4th, and I urge everyone, if they can vote, to get out and vote and make your feelings known on how you want to proceed with the 7.3 million bond issue. So that's all. Thank you.
Dr. Dyer?
Thank you, Kristy, for the shout out to our employees. You guys work those butts off, and it's greatly appreciated. Bee, you got to welcome to Holden Beach. You got tough shoes to fill, but I think you showed us you can do it. So thank you for all your welcome efforts.
Mr. Carter?
I'm not...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bear with me a minute. In the four years I've been up here, I've never felt the need to defend myself, but I've actually been pointed out by fingers tonight. So I'd like to explain, when I was a commissioner during the purchase of the pier property, I was accused of not listening to the property owners. The HBPOA had a meeting that contacted the LGC to have us removed from the agenda after a contract was placed on the pier. After that removal, several property owners from across, which is 400 homes across from the pier property, contacted the LGC because they were in, scared they were going to lose their access, we needed the emergency access. So when that happened, the LGC put us back on the agenda. I took that as a response from people saying that that's what they need, that that's what they wanted, that the interest was there. So I'm confused as to say that I wasn't listening to the property owners. In all actuality, I thought we should purchase the entire plot. We'd have revenue parking there, we'd have a campground there, be a beautiful place to put a fire station, because then we'd have rescue right out the front of it onto the ocean. So I, I was shot down to buy the whole entire property. I'm not sure quite why that's a poor purchase, it's doubled in price. We're getting revenue from the parking and the camping. We would have liked to seen a restaurant there. I've tried on three occasions to have a private-public partnership, not sure why that wasn't accepted. I don't see how someone coming in and wanting to build a building, tear the old building down, and no cost to the town, it's not, we need a restaurant there. We've been, you know, we have to have some recreational activity there, so that's where my stand was on that. Been accused of wasting taxpayers' money. The interest of the pier property cost us $150,000 because we waited a month, because we were taken off the agenda, and then we were put back on when property owners requested it. The stormwater plan of Block Q, hopefully we can use that, that was about $26,000, but it was voted not to use it. Hopefully, we could still use that permit since Randy said we can. We had to pay out at Fire Town Manager $160,000 for a salary per year. We hired a firm to hire a interim, when we had an interim town manager, so that was tax dollars spent. The pier building demolition, I tried to get a private-public partnership, I was told it was, let's not rush the building, and then we had to tear it down with no plan to put anything back in, in place. So that's about a half a million dollars right there. So I want to apologize to the community, to Kristy, to the Parks and Rec Board. Felt the importance of needing a stage for the concert venues, people come out, they enjoy it. This isn't a private beach, our community across the bridge is part of this beach. We got tax dollars put down to put sand on the beach from the FEMA project, that wasn't us just town of Holden Beach paying for that. The federal government helped pay for that, that accommodations tax is not property owners, that's the community. The community is supporting us, paying for parking, they're supporting us when they come to this campground, there's business on this island that, that are supported by people outside of it. We need to take into consideration that it's not just a small group of people on this island, there's a community here. We need, if you come out to a concert and see, in this day and age, people out there dancing, children playing, to, to let go of that is, is, is a disgrace, I really think. We had it in the budget, we agreed we would move forward with just the stage, and now we're backpedaling again. In two years, I would have thought that I could at least get a stage put up for the enjoyment of the community, and I apologize for that, I really do. I'm finished.
Mr. Barfus?
I have no comments, other than thank you for coming out and thank you for participating in the public hearing.
All righty, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session.
Madam Clerk, will you read the?
Listen, North Carolina General Statute 14331811, hence we consider the qualification of the respective employee in the North Carolina General Statute 14331811, eight re, follow the attorney.
All right, five-minute recess before we go into executive session. Thank you all for being here.